Alive, it's alive, it's alive.
Hello.
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 Hello, hello, hello.
Hello, motherfuckers.
Hello, everyone.
What's up, dirty dogs?
Hello.
Uh, hello.
Hello. It's me.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, hello, hello.
Gangsters, what's up, guys?
What up, guys? Good to see you. Happy Friday. Let's go. It's good to see you, guys. Good to see you, guys. A little early here, guys. A little early, as you can see there. Still rolling their, their blue screen, but we're ready to go, man. Shout out to the Three Stooges. That's it, man. Shout out to the Stooges, man. I love the Stooges. They're awesome. They're awesome, man. I love them. And shout out to, of course, Knuckleheads. Shop knuckleheads.com.
I'm trying to think, but nothing happens.
They're awesome.
Remind me to kill you later.
I'll make a note of it. I ain't gonna pencil.
Well, I change my mind. I'm gonna do it now.
Ooh, ooh.
Ah, it's good to see everybody, man. Happy Friday, doll, y'all. Guys, uh, we're gonna do the morning show today. Um, I'm not gonna do tonight. Um, I'm not gonna do a show tonight, because I got a lot of work tomorrow morning. Um, but what I'll do is tomorrow night, we'll do Saturday night show. So we'll party now, and we'll party Saturday night, but just no partying late tonight, because I got work to do tomorrow, and a lot of shit to do, so gotta get this shit finished. But, uh, as soon as it's done this week, I'm pretty much opened up, so. Chad is gangster. It is sometimes. Sometimes it can be that. Tam Tam, Mary, Eric, Charmed, Sir Westo, Chris, Jenna Terry, Steve Tuns, yep, David. Yeah, sometimes you gotta work. What's up, bipolar? What's up, Laguna? What's up, Christine? So, yeah, Saturday will be fun, man. We'll do a live show Saturday. Guys, I got everything we ordered, except for my light for the rig. I don't understand why the, it was all supposed to come together. So we got the gimbal. We got the phone carrier, and we got the counterweight. What we don't have is the light, which again, you know, sometimes like when we're out with, with Jeremy, usually we're out at night. Sometimes we're trying to show you that stuff, and, you know, the camera doesn't pick it up so well, since it's so, uh, dark outside. So got ourselves a little cube light that sticks on top. What if there's a chase tonight? Then I'm fucked, Matt. Then I'm fucked. And then you'll be watching it on Channel Seven, or Two, or Nine, saying, "Well, I really, I really wish they'd stop. You know, this is so dangerous. Anybody who's driving, you need to turn around right now, lock your door, go right home and draw the blinds, because everything is very dangerous. You need to go home right now before you die." But wait, I'm 200 miles from the chase. It doesn't matter. Thank you, Allison Hu- Allison Hoover. Thank you so much. Thank you, Allison. Sent out your stuff, too. Thank you, Allison. Appreciate ya. So, yeah, man. Visibility is overrated. It is. Can't ignore the Phillies? Come on now, the Phillies ain't played anybody yet. Let's see what happens when they play the Braves. Let's see what happens when they play the Braves. I mean, every team went down. All the underdogs went down. Poor Rays. You know, Kayla's angry, probably. Her team lost. I mean, hopefully my team does good. Like I said, I'm worried about the pitching. So it is what it is, man. What happened with the purge? What do you mean? Was it supposed to start yesterday, and I did not know it? Did I not get, did I miss the memo? I don't know. That means there will be a chase tonight. That's right, model. So get ready. There will be a nice, a crazy one, too, since I won't be here. What happened last year? What do you mean, what happened last year? How are the Rangers doing? Well, they've won. They've made them, they've, uh, entered the playoffs. I guess they play Astros? I'm guessing. It's 4:00 AM where you're at, maybe. Not here. It's 10:15 AM, and they're still late. They should have started at 10:00. Or stinks? I don't know. He was sitting with the toy that Jason got him, and then, uh, he left. It's around here somewhere, just in the house. Oh, the phone was supposed to trigger it? Yeah. No. Yeah, no. Yeah, no. Braves went down. Did I fall asleep for three days and they got swept or something? Braves have had a bye, just like the Dodgers, because they won their division by such a large margin. Remember, they get the first week bye while everybody beats the shit out of each other. So now Dodgers will play the D-bags, and, uh, Phillies will play the Braves. We'll see. We'll see if, uh, the Phillies can do something against a real team. This will be their best. Look, if they can beat the Braves, the Phillies, then they could go to the World Series, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, uh, who's better in the East, in the NL East, than the Braves? Who? I mean, it would be then the Phillies if they won, but I guarantee you, if we went into 100, if we went over to this club and they all knew about baseball, and we asked them all who was the best team, I, I, I'd pretty much say that 75%, would say the Braves are. Then the rest would be either the Phillies, or whoever else you could come up with. So, here's what it is. Well, yeah, that was last year, JR. Again, that was last year. Again, you're talking about also a team that, uh, you know, again, the Braves won the World Series without Ronald Acuna. They didn't have, uh, you know, their whole lineup, and now they have their whole lineup. So we shall see. You know, and Phillies, Philly was struggling for a while, and then they started to really play better, right? Trey Turner, you guys were telling me, "Oh, man, what happened to him? He's terrible. He's garbage." Then all of a sudden, I said, "Man, don't worry about a guy like that." You know, everybody has their ups and downs in baseball. It's too hard to play all 162 games. Great. It just doesn't work that way. So you're gonna have slumps, and he slumped, and that's it. He, you know, he, uh, righted the ship, so to speak, and off he goes. Johnny, it's your birthday. Happy birthday, Johnny.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, you thing from another world, you?
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
Yeah, I mean, we'll see, Killer. Again, they are playing great right now. Schwaber's playing great. Trey has turned it around, you know. Rhea Muto's always a good player, you know. They got plenty of, uh, Castellanos. They got, look, they got plenty of power. It's not, it's not, it's not the question. The question is, is can they apply it and beat a team that's, has been, and is this year been better than they are in their same, you know, in the NL East? You know what I mean? That's the difference, you know? Like I said, as good as the Dodgers have played, they ran away with the division. They won easily. But I'm telling you, as a Dodger fan, I'm kinda frightened, because we have nothing but rookie pitchers. And rookie pitchers, you know, you gotta remember, playoff baseball is way different than normal baseball. Every pitch is magnified. Okay? And you've got huge packed crowds, you've got everybody, even the people that don't watch baseball, start watching baseball. And that can take a toll on a young player. You know what I mean? The nerves. You know what I mean? As to where the older folks, you know, they're kinda used to it. You know, they know the ups and downs. So that's my thought on the matter, and it's 10:18 now, and these motherfuckers still ain't starting. Latest can be every goddamn day. So we'll see. Yes, happy birthday again, Johnny. Are you the lawyer team for Spindler, Harland, and Herman? Want a pitcher, not a belly itcher? Well, again, we have some great young pitchers. They've, they've played phenomenal. But again, they're young, and they don't have the experience, and that's what I'm kinda worried about. You know what I mean? The pressure and the inexperience is a little tough, you know what I mean? And we, again, all our, you know, Urias, you know what happened to him. You know, we, we know what happened to Dustin May. He went down for the year. Walker Buehler has been gone since last season. He hasn't played this entire season with Tommy John surgery. And he was our ace. So there's three starters right there out of your five that are gone. So, yeah, that's why we picked up Lance Lynn, and he's been all right. Not, not so hot, but you know, you just, you need that veteran presence, and that why, that's why we have Lynn and Kershada kinda, you know, help the other younger ones along, you know? So we'll see. We'll see what's going on. Trevor Bauer's available. I don't think he is. You don't think you could pick him up even if you wanted to? Besides, the Dodgers would never do that, and like I told you, he should sue the Dodgers for every dollar that he lost. That's coming from a Dodger fan. And the Dodgers should learn from that. You know what I mean? And they might have to do this, might go through the same thing with Wander Franco. They might go through the same thing, not with Urias, because Urias was actually convicted one time of what he had done. This is the second time Julio Urias got in trouble for the same shit. Not the first time. Oh, there he is, huh, Stinkums? So we'll see. We'll see what goes on. Caught a foul ball before the Rangers game, took it down the dugout. Struck my head over the, oh, stuck your head. That's the sign that they did. Oh, that's awesome, Alice. Yeah, sometimes players can be really nice. Sometimes, you know, some of them can be real dicks. You know, I told you all that, but, you know, when I was a kid, that's what I used to do. 16, 17 years old, I'd go and find where the players are, and back then, nobody really gave a fuck, and I was getting the... I still have all the cards that I got autographed in a big box, a giant box. Because again, a lot of them think, okay, well, he's coming to get these autographs, he's just gonna go and sell them. And it's not true all the time. Some people actually wanna keep them. So I still have them all. You know what I mean? And again, it would be hard for me to sell them, because a lot of people are like, "Well, we may know you. You might have a picture with them." That doesn't mean the autograph is real. That could still be fake. So I'd have to go and send them off to get graded or whatever, so that way people see that there, there's a COA, a certificate of authenticity kinda thing, so that way, you know, you're legitimate, so to speak. So YouTube and Rumble, what are you talking about? Oh, you're talking to Killer? Yeah. If you look on the Linktree, Killer, I'll put it up here. We're everywhere. Kick, Rumble, Twitch, YouTube, all on the Linktree right there. And Stinkums is right here with his little, with his little toy. My little boy with his little toy. Hold on, let's get him in here. Let's get Stinkum thinking. Jason, where are you at? See, he's got his toy right there. See, Jason, he loves it. See, Jason, he loves the toy. Sleeping with his toy. He loves it. Oh, it looks just like he, he loves it. That might be the sweetest cat in the world right there. I just don't know. Might be right there. Might be the sweetest one ever. Alright, so let's do this. Let's, um... Why does it show me offline on Rumble? It's weird. Says eight people are watching, but it shows me offline. What the fuck? God, I hate Rumble. Good Rumble, man. Good Rumble. Rumble sucks. If anybody from Rumble is watching, I'm telling you, it's like I made that app. So... Yeah, I don't think I, I forgot to add it, I guess. Fuck. God damn it. Let's see if we can add it now. I doubt it. I fucking doubt it. Let's go here, guys. You're gonna stare at the... Stare there, but again, they're, they're still not even working. They're still fucking late. Latest can be. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think this is gonna work. I might have to restart the whole fucking thing now. Damn it. I don't wanna. Not for Rumble. I'm not gonna. Not gonna, Rumble, because you're just such garbage. Yeah, they really are all garbage to the creators. They don't care about them. They really don't. Let's see, uh, let's refresh here. Let's see if it comes up, but I doubt it. I'm gonna have, yeah. Yeah, Rumble's off for today, guys. I don't know. I don't fucking know. It's always something. You know, every time, you'd have to redo the stream key. You have to do all that shit every single time. All the other ones, you just push start. Just put the title, and it changes all the title. Finally, they're here. Jesus.
Today is Friday, October 6th, 2023, and I'd like to bring the meeting to order, please. My name is Paul Krikorian. I'm president of the council.
I'm 24 minutes late.
And we're ready to begin.
I'm 24 minutes late.
Public comment will be taken today, both in person and in the council chambers. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President.
I guess, guys. They better hope for themselves, otherwise it's just a waste.
Lee, McCosker, Padilla.
It's the most annoying shit.
Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslavsky. Ten members present at the corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, before we begin, I would just like to take a moment...
I'm gonna let you guys know. Should we stop it and restart it for Rumble, or no? Yes or no?
In the chambers today, and I'm delighted to welcome you all here today for two very important presentations that we have.
Take one second. We'll be back in 30 seconds at last.
I would like to say, since there are so many new people here, that, uh, under the council rules, uh, there can be no disruption of the work of the council. And I've already heard one gentleman who's been bellowing throughout the last half hour, as well as Armando Herman, and I want to tell them both personally that they, uh, will not disrupt any of the presentations, or any of the other work of the council, or they will be removed.
His name is Armando?
And likewise, anybody else who shouts out or disrupts the work of the council will be promptly removed pursuant to Rule 12 of the City Council.
Talking about Armando here.
Let everyone in the council chambers know that right now. Uh, Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes of October 4th, 2023.
Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember McCosker seconds. Next, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Hernandez moves. Councilmember Jaroslavsky seconds.
Already getting in trouble. Armando's already got in trouble. We haven't even started yet.
Item one is an item notice for public hearings.
He's already salty.
Items two through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Housing and Homelessness Committee report has been submitted for item 15 and posted to council file number 23-1066. Items 16 through 20 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Has been bellowing.
Very good. Without objection, members, those items are now before us. Uh, do members have any items that they would like to call special? Councilmember McCosker.
Not an item to pull special, but on item 20.
Boy, it is packed in there. Look at that shit. Holy shit. Guys, we're gonna be, it's gonna be two hours of presentations. Holy fuck.
February 10th.
Holy fuck.
23, and I will request that it be sent forthwith.
You see that in there? It's standing room only.
For the motion? I will second it.
Thank you very much, sir.
My pleasure. Alright, any other specials, members? Uh, Councilmember Jaroslavsky?
Thank you. I'd like to...
The family brought their families.
Ask that we continue item 15 to October 20th.
Till October 20th, without objection, that would be the action of the council.
Then I'd also like to call item one special.
Very good. Thank you.
For a substitute motion.
Item one for a substitute motion. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember, and is that, that is not, the motion is available, or is it not available yet? Oh, the city attorney has the substitute motion? Alright, um, are you gonna need to read the whole thing?
Yeah, Trailer Swift hasn't said yet.
Yes, I'll move the, or I will...
Shout out to Groote.
Mr. President.
Guys, he definitely gets his shit cut at Fantastic Sam's. Look at that haircut.
Item number one.
The widow peaky isn't even straight.
I therefore move that City Council allow the Council, or the California Municipal Finance Authority to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed $40 million.
And if you're paying any more than a $20 Fantastic Sam's Cut haircut, come on.
I mean, dude, come on. City Revenue Bonds, Series 2015, as well as the refinancing of acquisition, construction, renovation, expansion, building improvements, equipping, repairs, and improvements for the facilities.
And I pay 30 bucks, and I give him 45.
6305 Yucca Street.
And they shave the back of my neck with a straight razor and all that.
6301 Yucca Street.
Like, you know, put shaving cream on your neck and your back and shave it all like that, not razor it, I mean, machine it.
1812 through 1822 and a half, Iver Street, or Iver Avenue, 1810.
That's a full boulder. Yeah, bring your kid to work day? Look at him. He's all pissed, too. I'd be pissed, too, if I had to sit there and listen to all this garbage.
Council District 13.
Look at the kid's face.
And hold a Tefra hearing and adopt the attached Tefra resolution at the council meeting to be held on Friday, October 6th, 2023.
He can't grow a beard? No.
At 10:00 AM, located at 200 North Spring Street.
Dude's 30 years old, and not one hair's popped out of that face.
90012.
Very good, and that motion was seconded by Councilmember McCosker.
Do any of them have beards? They might be a thing where it's like the Yankees, where you can't have a beard, you can only have a mustache. Oh, he's got one. Old Grady. Shout out to Grady, of course. He's gotta be different.
So my understanding is it's a technical amendment, and it is, says, "I move that item 13 be amended to adjust instruction D, as indicated below in the underlying text."
I'm gonna start with some Cam Louis.
To the council, and here's the new language, within 90 days in consultation with the CAO.
Who are they pandering to today? We'll have to see, while, I don't quite know yet.
With recommendations for further activating the Los Angeles Mall.
It took them 24 minutes just to start. 24 minutes late to start.
Small businesses, including short-term solutions for making the Los Angeles Mall a more inviting location for events and the public.
Los Angeles Mall?
Is there a second to this motion?
Yes, uh... Councilwoman Hatt.
Aw, man, Grady's back here again. Grady, we're seeing a whole bunch of Grady today.
Any other specials, members? Specials on the right? Specials on my left? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, what's available for us now?
Specials on the right of me.
Mr. President?
Specials on the left of me.
Two through 12.
Specials in front of me.
And a separate vote for item 13 as amended.
Those items are now before us.
Wow, you're a good boy. Sleepy baby care. He's a sleepy baby.
Alright, so those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tab weight the votes.
Cam Louis, yeah, it's Cam Dog with Louis XIII cross.
Very good. Uh, thank you, members. With that, uh, before we go to public comment, Mr. Lee, thank you so much for your patience.
Oh, the latest one to be indicted.
Are at the podium ready for a very special presentation.
Got caught going to Vegas, getting gifts.
You have the floor.
No problem, Mr. Husband. Thank you so much. Colleagues, today I stand uh, with my colleague Heather, uh, Councilmember Heather Hatt.
So why is he even here talking?
Before you to celebrate the Korean holiday known as Hangul Day. Before we get started, I believe we have a short video about the Korean language repaired, and I think we've...
Korea hater from Korea. You're bitches, but I recognize.
I'll follow along. Please play the video.
It's my favorite Korean drop ever. Oh. Ah, sweet soft music. Guten Tag. Bonjour.
I know as hell.
Produced a new system which reflects the pronunciation of this particular language, Korean. So this is the only language in the world, I know, where not foreign elements were taken over, but they started from analyzing their own language, and then to sign Hangul.
He's round-eyed. I'm round-eyed. Korean adjacent. You guys are too funny, eh?
한국인의 삶과 문화를 이끌어 온 한글. 한글을 알면 한국이 보입니다.
Why is this thing popped out here? Hold on, guys.
So colleagues, as you just saw, Hangul is a Korean alphabet that includes 14 consonants and 10 vowels. And the one major difference between Hangul and other languages is that instead of letters sitting side by side or on top of each other, they're stacked up into blocks, with one block representing one syllable, one sound. For example, Annyeong, Ha Se Yo, the Korean word for hello, has five distinct sounds, An, Yang, Ha, Se, and Yo. In the Hangul, the word is written out as five blocks. So I don't wanna, um, uh, there should be a slide on the screen that you can reference, as you take a look up there. So I don't wanna get into it too much, because I know many of the speakers today will be touching on how it actually all works. But in just a few moments, uh, uh, the screen will continue showing some basic words and how they are actually broken down. So next week, on October 9th, Koreans around the world officially celebrate the creation of the Korean language and honor the institution of the Korean writing script by King Sejong, established back in 1446. As the only Korean American on the city council, it is my privilege and my duty to celebrate our cultural heritage and proclaim today as Hangul Day here in the city of Los Angeles.
Nice and clean, I snapped in.
As all of you are aware, Los Angeles is, uh, the most diverse city in the United States, and we are lucky to also be home to the largest Korean population outside of Korea. You've heard me say it so many times before, but Koreans, especially over the last decade, have become such an integral part of the mainstream American society. For Koreans, maintaining our roots is a critical component of keeping our culture alive and helping it grow in meaningful ways. Just yesterday, in fact, at LA City College in Councilmember Soto Martinez's district, the school unveiled a statue of King Sejong to commemorate the Korean language's history and Korean culture in general. And that statue is donated by the Imperial Family of Joseon, who is joined here today with me. And again, thank you, thank you so much for your support. When we honor our language, we are honoring the very basis by which everything we have accomplished is contingent upon. Today highlights the importance of Koreans instilling in younger generations the proper appreciation for the courage and value of our ancestors, a deep sense of their roots and pride in their own cultural heritage, which obviously includes our language, Hangul. Thank you all for joining me today, and now I'd like to hand the podium over to, uh, my seatmate and, uh, fellow Councilmember, Councilmember Heather Hatt.
Some might be there, who knows?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues, members in the chambers today. Annyeong Seo, everyone. Today is a very special day for all of us here in Los Angeles as we celebrate Hangul Day, the anniversary of the creation of the Korean alphabet. This year, we also celebrate the 70th anniversary of the alliance between the United States and South Korea. This alliance has been a cornerstone of peace and prosperity in the Asian Pacific region, and it's a testament to the strong friendships between our countries.
Hi, cat. That's a full house cat. I can't even tell who's there. Look at it. It's so packed, man. I don't even know who's there. Mr. Herman's there for sure. He already got in trouble.
And other forms of Korean culture.
He's already in trouble, so, yeah.
The Korean language has become increasingly popular around the world.
Alright, you guys ready?
This has helped to break down barriers and build bridges between people from different cultures. Here in Los Angeles, we are fortunate to have a large and vibrant Korean-American community.
Am I making popcorn? No, but the weed will taste like popcorn after a few, after you hit it a second time.
Korea Town is a thriving cultural hub, and it's home to many successful Korean-American businesses. Korean-Americans also play an important role in the civic life of our city, and they're making significant contributions to the 10th district. On this Hangul Day, I encourage all of you to learn a few Korean phrases, just like I did. Or watch K-pop videos or Korean dramas.
That'll help you out.
You may be surprised on how much you'll enjoy it. And to all of the Korean-American friends, thank you for making Los Angeles such a special place. Thank you.
Silencer? I do like the volcano, Caroline.
I'd like to personally thank my colleague, who I, you know, have had the pleasure of working with over the last year. Doing so much in the Korean community and really engaging our culture and learning about it. And I just wanna thank you for your friendship to the Korean community.
Yeah, the only thing downside to this is their pricing.
Right now, we have the honor of having someone, the, from the royal house, the last descendant from the royal house of the Joseon and Korean Empire. We have...
I roll joints all the time, Victor, when I'm not on the show. Just because to blaze joints in here is gonna stink out the whole house and...
Good morning, everyone.
Too much smoke for the cat.
Buenos dias, everybody.
You know, my, my machines can't keep up with all the smoke.
I'm very glad to hear. Especially yesterday morning, I joined unveiling of a statue, Fourth King of Joseon Dynasty, Sejong. It's amazing.
Jackie Chan ain't Korean.
Remarkable time I had. This time...
Pretty sure Jackie Chan is Korean, but Chinese.
I've been in America many times, from 1979.
They're definitely not Korean, so you got another, another...
Forty, fifty years.
Set of people do.
But Korean community gave me Angel's statue.
To acknowledge.
That's why I'm the one of angels in Los Angeles. Very much, very much. Thank you very much. Please, nine, nine of October, Hangulal make. I am very glad. I hope so. Please, thank you very much.
Oh, Koreatown's fun. A lot of great places to eat.
And no stranger to our chambers is our good friend, Korean Council General, Young Won Kim.
Too small to be an iPad. Too big to be a phone. What was that?
Thank you very much. 안녕하세요, 대한민국 총영사 김영환입니다. 오늘 LA CEO에서 Hangul날을 기념해준 걸 기쁘게 생각합니다. Hangul날 지점으로 더 많은 LA 시민들이 한인 커뮤니티와 가까워지고 한국 문화를 즐길 수 있기를 기대합니다. Paul Cracorein 의장님과 열다섯 분의 의원님들 한분한 분에게 깊은 감사의 말씀드립니다. Mister President, every member of the city council, together with our community leaders, I thank you for recognizing our Korean alphabet, Hangul. As this year, we celebrate the seventieth anniversary of Korea-US alliance. Your recognition holds even more significance to our Korean community. It means the city of LA honors Korean heritage and its contribution to the city. Thank you very much. Let me briefly say why and how Hangul is connected with the city life of Los Angeles. Hangul was deliberately invented by the political leader six hundred years ago to help the illiteracy read and write and empower the masses for the unity of the nation. As the city's famous slogan reads, "LA is for everybody", where everybody has equal access to justice, resources, and opportunities. I think we can find a powerful resonance in the spirit of Hangul and its legacy.
I see Mr. Sax. I saw him in there, so we know Herman and Sax are there.
Hangul Day in Los Angeles goes beyond a simple celebration of Korean script. It highlights the thriving cultural diversity within the city and our community's contribution to enriching the city's culture. Many of Korean culture comes with the Korean language, represented by Hangul. I think Hangul stands as an important instrument in not only harnessing diversity, but also bringing us greater financial and social prosperity.
There's Mr. Sax. Look at him over there on the left.
다시 한번 Hangul날을 기념해주고 축하해 주신 것을 감사하게 생각합니다. LA시가 다양성과 포용성으로 더욱 발전하기를 기대합니다. 우리 모두 같이 갑시다. 감사합니다.
Next, we have Monica Rue, who is the chairwoman of Foundation of Korean Language and Culture here in City of LA.
He will bellow?
Thank you very much. For the sake of time, I'm going to read what I wrote, first in Korean, Hangul, and next, my second language, English. 저는 한국어 지능재단 이사장 류모니카입니다. 제 본업은 종양방사선 전문 의사입니다. 한국어 지능재단은 한국 교육부 소속 LA 교육원과 함께 정규학교에 한국어반을 신설 유지해 왔습니다. 현재 미국 전국에 약 200여 개의 학교들이 한국어 클래스를 가르치고 있고,
Yeah, there's a lot of Korean kids in my elementary school. I told you, Koreatown had a problem with schooling. They didn't have enough schools, too many kids, so they bust a lot of the Korean kids to our schools.
대단한 숫자입니다. 세종대왕은 천사백사십삼년 지금으로부터 오백팔십년 전에 한글을 창제하셨습니다.
That's where I had, you know, Kim Pop and all that. You know how kids bring stuff to school? It's like the Bring a Dish to School Day.
음성학적으로 누가 따라오던 업소만큼 훌륭한 글인데, 더 중요한 것은 대왕께서 글을 모르는 저소득층 서민 중의 신분인 종의 신분들을 위해서
Well, she's American now.
이 글을 창제하셨습니다. 공평성, 사회정의를 실천하신 분입니다.
You had Vietnamese and Yugoslavian kids?
한글을 세계 언어의 하나로 되므로서 글로벌 시민이 되는데 큰 힘이 될 것을 믿습니다. 우리들의 자세들에게 차별 없는 교육받을 교육을 주는 것이 기회를 주는 것이 기존 세대의 의무라는 생각입니다.
Like that hat.
Hangul날을 기념하고, 한글 창제의 과정을 알리고, 한글바를 제공함으로써 우리들의 자세대가 세계로 사회정의를 실천하며 미합중국의 든든한 백본이 될 것입니다. All of you understood me very well, right? Yeah. Okay, I'm going to speak in English. I am the president of the Foundation for Korean Language and Culture in the USA, a nonprofit organization based in Los Angeles, California.
NGOs.
My profession is radiation oncology.
Wow, she's a radiologist.
The organization has worked in partnership with Korean Education Center, Ministry of Education, Republic of Korea, to assist our children, heritage, non-heritage, to widen their interest, dream, and vision of becoming global citizens by learning Korean language and culture as one of the options of world language courses in the public and private secondary schools.
Godzilla was Japanese, not Korean, dude.
There are over two hundred schools that offer Korean language classes nationwide in this country.
Come on.
Los Angeles County alone, there are eighty schools, three hundred thirty-two classes. Not one class per one, one school. Little over four classes each school. Over eighty-five hundred students taking Korean. The positive wave of learning is from the students, teachers, families,
What can I do?
and more importantly, school districts with a vision for our next generation. I would like to congratulate you all on this. Hangul, the Korean alphabet, was created by King Sejong, as mentioned before, in fourteen forty-three.
Thinking, you're thinking of Chuck Norris.
Five hundred eighty years ago.
Can't believe Chuck is still alive, doing well.
Chosun was run by class system then.
Still looks good, too, Chuck.
With larger proportion of folks belonged to lower class, serving upper-class people. They did not have opportunity of learning...
She's tired of it. Look, she's already... Hurry up. I want to talk about us already.
Although Hangul was made scientifically, medically, phonetically eminent way, most significant aspect of it was for the people of Chosun. Achieving equity was the main goal. This includes equal opportunity of education as you all do here. By designating Hangul Day, students, whether heritage, non-heritage, will revisit the importance of learning world languages, equity, and social justice. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm falling asleep.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. And finally, colleagues, I'd like to introduce one of our students from Chatsworth High School.
Chatsworth, yeah!
Chloe Young to come say a few words. Oh, all of you, alright.
All of you. We're all going to say a few words. We're all from Chatsworth.
Good morning, everyone. We are juniors from Chatsworth Charter High School. Our names are Chloe Young,
Emery On,
Kayla Tra,
and Grace Lee.
We had the pleasure of enrolling into our Korean class at school. We took Korean one, two, and three. It was a great experience where we got to learn more about our culture, our background, and more.
I've been part of the Korean dual language since kindergarten, so it's really nice to see the Korean culture spread through the media such as with music and movies.
In class, we learned that the King Sejong Dewang was able to create the first Hangul Korean language because before that Koreans would use Chinese characters as their form of language. So Sejong Dewang was able to create Korean based off the way our tongues roll.
We consider ourselves very lucky to be able to have this opportunity to be closer to our Korean heritage and our culture because not many people have the chance to do so. So we are so grateful to be able to speak today for Hangul Day and represent Korean. So thank you so much to Councilmember John Lee for giving us this opportunity and being so involved with Chatsworth Charter High School and many other high schools in District Twelve. 감사합니다.
So, colleagues, I just, it is truly an honor for me, growing up here in the city of Los Angeles all my life. If you would have told me that Korean culture would be highlighted in council or that even that my Ralph Sun, Reseda, and Devonshire would someday be a Korean market, I would not have, I would not have believed you. I was only one of a few Korean kids, kids of Korean descent in my elementary school. And to see our food and our, our culture, and even today, as these young ladies just told you, to have Korean be offered in our schools is just, it makes me so proud. So I want to thank, Mr. President, thank you, thank my colleagues for always indulging me and allowing me to celebrate the Korean culture, the culture that I love so much. We have a gift on your desks. There's a couple of them, but the, uh, the canvas, that's on, just the small canvas, that's on each of your desks is your name in Korean.
I told you, it's bomb.
And so we hope that you can take a look at that and hope that it's something that you hold special because I know for me, thank you, Mr. DeLeon, it's something that we, we, our culture, our language is something that we love so much and that we want to celebrate. And thank you for allowing us to do that here today in City Council. Thank you, everyone.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Hutt, thank you. And before, before you do the presentation, Mr. Lee, if I may,
Sure.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember McCosker, who represents in the One Five, one of our great Korean-American landmarks. Mr. McCosker.
Exactly. Thank you so much for this opportunity. In the One Five, we do have one of the great Korean-American assets on the West Coast, and we have the Korean Friendship Bill, and I'm so appreciative of that. And in honor of today, and on behalf of the One Five, we are going to rename our district. We are now the Hana Da-Sut. Thank you very much.
Courageously done, Mr. McCosker. Well done. Alright, thank you. Mr. Lee and Councilmember Hutt, thank you so much.
So, colleagues, I'd like to present this.
Yeah, we still have one more after this. At least one more, because these folks aren't Korean, obviously. Ain't sitting in the front row for nothing. So there's at least them, as well as the Korean folks here.
Recognizing Hangul Day here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to do this.
Alright. Thank you. Happy Hangul Day, everyone. Alright, thank you all very much for being with us. And, you know, one of the reasons that it's important that we do these presentations in councils, we get to experience the incredible rich diversity that makes up Los Angeles. We get to celebrate the many immigrant communities that make our city great. And today, we get to also, in addition to recognizing some of the immigrant communities that make our city great, we also get to recognize the indigenous people of the city as well.
I see Um back there. Stacy's there and the, what do you call it?
Invite Councilmember Hernandez to...
Chick who got thrown out, she's there.
Make her way up for our next very important presentation in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day.
I don't see Mr. Herman. Do they already throw him out? I don't see him. He's like nowhere to be found in there. And it's hard to see everybody, you know? I don't see Mr. Spindler either, but you know how Mr. Spindler does. He's out back smoking a joint probably and then comes in with the puppet a little late. You know, coffee and the puppet a little late. Because I really think he shows up first, signs up on the big screen thing, or on the queue, on the kiosk, and then leaves.
Councilmember Hernandez, welcome.
And I bet you, him and Herman always sign up for each other. Whoever gets there first signs up for both. I bet.
Just want to have everybody here. We are going to start off with a land acknowledgement that will be provided by Mona Morales, Community Outreach Director for the San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gaberlino Tongva, and Elected Commissioner for the Los Angeles City and County Native American Indian Commission. And then we're going to go into a song offering on behalf of the Winds of the South Women's Northern Tribal Group, Siwa Marshall Valencia Yaki. Mona, please take it away.
Alright, so we're going to get a song, a little presentation besides the speech.
미하, 네투완나드네, Mona Morales Ricalde, and Ellie Morales Ricalde. We are descendants of the first people of this land, Tongva land, representing Chief Anthony Morales and the San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians. We are the traditional caretakers of this land's people, known to our people as Tovangar, and the village site that's closest to us is Yagna.
Listen.
In honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day,
They call themselves Indians, not Native Americans.
We affirm our commitment to correct historical, to ensure historical accuracy, a departure from a narrative that we were discovered. It honors our ancestors and causes us to confront the troubling and complicated history of our people and this land. Pre-colonization issues like housing insecurity, climate issues, and imbalances did not exist. Our people lived in harmony and respect with each other and Mother Nature on this land.
Hmm, hold on, I have to think about that guy.
Celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, we acknowledge the strength and resilience of our ancestors, a day focused on healing and reconciliation.
Well, two really sitting. One's in jail already.
Despite the proposed assimilation and extermination of our people, we continue to exist.
And that's not including DeLeon, because he was never convicted of anything. He's just caught on tape saying bad stuff.
In our language, we say F W X M, which means we are here. We would like to move forward with a land acknowledgement acknowledging that we are on Gavialino Tongva land. And with that shared understanding, I would like to move forward with a blessing by my daughter.
That face paint is dope. I can't see her.
Dear Creator, we pray the world is filled with your love and light, acknowledging the path that you have created for us in wisdom and love. We are here today to pray for the blessing over City Council, Los Angeles, and all Indigenous people. We pray to make good choices, choices that make and make change and encourage the balance of peace and peace. We pray for decisions to be guided by love, making choices that consider a better world for the next generation, environment, and people. As we celebrate all Indigenous cultures and the resilience to maintain tradition, bless and protect them. May days like today bring healing and reconciliation to this land and all Indigenous people. May the light that is inside us connect us and bring us hope for now and the future.
It is SP. It's good to see you, street peeps. It is a volcano, the hybrid one. There's the face paint. Look at the face paint. It's dope.
We are sisters of the one drum, Winds of the South. We are inner tribal circle that gathers around the ceremonial drum for the sole purpose, the sole purpose of healing. And in honor of each and every one that is here today, we would like to offer you a heart song, a prayer. So we are going to share with you the honor song.
Her neck is pretty dope, too.
I ask of you to just open your heart to receive the good medicine.
What is that she's holding? What is this?
And pass down.
A cannonball. What is that?
From generation to generation.
What is that?
And because we're inner tribal, I get the beautiful gift of singing with my sister. 쇼크웨요테스, 세키메테와이와림, all my relations.
Emerald, you mean the...
Ready, sis?
I'm ready.
Ya-yah-oh, weh-oh, weh-hah-oh.
Oh, my God!
Ya-yah-oh, weh-oh, weh-hah-oh. Weh-oh, weh-oh.
Apologies to all headphone users. I didn't know that was coming. Wow, blast that we have. Bro, Sound Guy got blasted out, too. Don't trust. Homeboy did the same thing I just did back there. Bro, he looks like Superfly Snuka, kinda. Don't tell, don't tell me he doesn't. He looks like Superfly. Shout out to Jimmy Superfly Snuka. Look at the ivory. She has like an ivory animal right there. That's cool. Hey, get her hand out of the way. Look at her neck. Maybe a bear or something? That's kind of like a bear shape.
I don't know if you all felt that, but I just want to ground us in the beautiful blessing that has occurred with this song, with the land acknowledgement. Thank you all for bringing that into City Hall and reminding us where the land that we're standing on, the caretakers of this land. We are here just to support that, but we are on Indigenous Peoples' Land. Colleagues, this morning, we're honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 6th, and we are fortunate to have several Indigenous leaders and guests joining us here today in chambers inside of City Hall. We are joined by Commissioners of the Los Angeles City and County Native American Indian Commission, and I want to thank them deeply for being here today. I was honored to be asked a few months ago to host Indigenous Peoples' Day by several members of the Indigenous community. And I want to ensure that I first consulted with Indigenous leaders and explored my own Indigenous roots before taking on this huge responsibility, because I do not take this lightly. There's a lot of respect that needs to be had here, and I wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence to be in this space. On my paternal side, on my father's side, my Hentes from Morena Mi Chakan.
Look at him back there.
Where the Perupecha people are from.
Blue hat on.
They are the original caretakers of that land. And I'm committed to continuing my self-identification to better know my own Indigenous roots and history. The city of Los Angeles sits on Native land right now where we are standing and sitting. And as we honor Indigenous Peoples' Day this year, I hope that as a city, we can rededicate ourselves to advancing policies that address that harm. I know that our Civil Rights Department has been working on several such items, including on an official land acknowledgement policy. And I look forward to working together and in partnership with Indigenous leaders here today to advance these policies. CD1 is honored to also be hosting Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration in McArthur Park tomorrow at 1:00 PM. And I hope that you all come out and join us in that celebration.
Does he feel weird inside that everybody around him doesn't have a mask on but him?
Nations of this land.
Fucking moron.
I want to acknowledge that we are joined today by several elders and tribal members of different Native Americans in my Indigenous communities. And I want to take this opportunity to call up some of our guest speakers to share a few words with us.
He looks like a fed.
I would like to invite President Rudy Ortega Jr. of the Fernandeño Tataviam Band of Mission Indians to speak.
Ami atam, neto one, tononi, tommy are, tapasi atam, tatavi atam, nicham, nihi ketam. Hello, everyone. My name is Rudy Ortega Jr. I'm the tribal president of the Fernandeño Tataviam people, where my relatives are from. The history, as mentioned, as shared with Mona Morales from the Gaberlino people, Los Angeles is Indigenous Peoples' Land, and the land of our ancestors. In Mission San Fernando, there was 2,992 people that were recruited and enslaved at Mission San Fernando, that they were baptized. They come from multiple dialects of language. My ancestry, my own ancestry, has Chu-mash ancestry, Tataviam ancestry.
Chu-mash Indians, all the rich ones.
That comes from the villages and regions of Los Angeles.
They got the Chu-mash casino.
Simi Valley, Santa Creta Valley, Antifol Valleys. As we were taken to Mission San Fernando in 1850, there was only 500 of us. And by that time, many people took the identity as Mexican in order to survive here in Los Angeles, as we were being prosecuted, hunted by California legislation for their scalps of their heads. By 1900, there was only 30 of us. Luckily, those three descent, those 30 ancestors of ours, those generations, there's 890 people today enrolled in my tribe, as tribal citizens. And we celebrate that because they stood stand and they proudly identified themselves as Native people through the horrific times that they lived through and life itself. So here, as we identify Indigenous Peoples' Greater Bridges, it's North and South Americas. It's not just Native Americans of the United States, but beyond these borders that we celebrate the Indigenous peoples that make up these lands on this continent that we now call home. And it's important, when I was the chairman of the Los Angeles City Council, we made that point to make this Indigenous Peoples' Day with my colleagues on the commission. Today, we celebrate it with our neighboring relatives that are south of the border and north of the border as well, and the first peoples of these lands here in the United States. So thank you so much, Council President and Councilmembers, for acknowledging this day as well.
Thank you, President Ortega. Next, I would like to call Sherri Thomas, who is the Chair of the Los Angeles City and County Native American Indian Commission.
Nguitu. Greetings from the Kual Indian Nation. My name is Sherri Thomas, Chair of the Los Angeles City-and-County Native American Indian Commission. Thank you so much, LA City Council, for acknowledging Indigenous Peoples'.
Look at him, he's sleeping with it. See it right there on the shot?
230,000 Native Americans of Los Angeles County stand in solidarity with the 476 million Indigenous Peoples worldwide, spread over 90 countries. And Los Angeles did such a wonderful thing when you created Indigenous Peoples' Day that started a ripple effect. There were so many other cities, counties, states that followed suit. So we are so proud of the fact that Los Angeles can be counted on to stand in solidarity with Indigenous Peoples and set the tone for the rest of the country. See Okla, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. And finally, I would like to ask Cindy Toledo from the Maya Kuanhobal Nation to speak a few words.
With the permission of the heart of heaven and the heart of our mother earth, on this sacred 6th Imosh, I direct myself to all the members of this council, council chamber, allowing me to speak on behalf of the Maya community in the city of Los Angeles. Hello, everyone. My name is Cindy Toledo. I am Maya Kuanhobal. I have been a cultural bearer for the Maya Kuanhobal Nation for more than 20 years. It's a pleasure and honor to be here with you all. Before I continue, I'd like to acknowledge the people of this land, the Tongva-Chumash-Gaberlino, whose land we stand on. These are their ancestral lands, so we thank them for their hospitality and for allowing us to live here on their lands. I would like to recognize and thank Councilwoman Unisa Hernandez for her support and for taking on this endeavor to continue remembering the memory of our ancestors, our ancestors who gave their lives for the preservation of our cultures and our existence. I am here in place of one of our elders, our Nana, our healer.
Who's spamming?
Spiritual guide from the Maya Kichen Nation, Juan Abax, who wasn't able to be here today due to the situation in our country of Chaka or Shumuleo.
Who's spamming? Anybody spamming in the chatroom? Stop now before you get kicked out.
To those of you who are not aware, there is currently, there is currently a national strike in Guatemala, an uprising of the Indigenous people and Guatemala's citizens to stop the attacks against the democracy of our home country. This strike is being led by the Indigenous authorities of the 48 cantones, or governance, who are in the defense of the rights that everyone has. Our Maya elders and communities are asking that the electoral results be respected and that the process that led to the result that certified Bernardo Arrevalo and Karin Herrera as elected president and vice president be preserved. It's for that reason that I am here today.
Stop being dead, guys.
In a very humble way, I am here to represent the Maya people. I'm here in representation of our Maya youth and as a first generation in this country. Our Indigenous natives people have existed on this continent for thousands of years. In recent years, many Indigenous natives have been forcibly displaced and left their land looking for better opportunities. That was the case of my parents. My parents came to this country over 35 years ago when they were around 14 years of age, primarily due to the fear for their lives during the Civil War and because of the poverty they faced during these times. They came here for safety, freedom, and a better future for my siblings and me. Therefore, I am humbled to be here with you all today in front of this City Council.
Quick traffic alert. All lanes of the 101 are now reopened. For the ones that are in the area, 101 in Hollywood.
The Indigenous native communities deserve to be noticed and heard.
After that pedestrian was hit on the freeway and killed.
We Indigenous natives are resilient. The power of our ancestors has made us resilient. During the time of colonization and throughout the years since then, they struggled, fought, and gave up their lives for us to be here today. I am here today as a citizen of this country and as a citizen of one of the many Maya nations that live here in this city, continuing that struggle and fighting to maintain our culture, our linguistic traditions, and customs alive. I am here to advocate and help advance and safeguard the original peoples and original nations' interests, especially those pertaining to the Maya nations. We are all here today to share how our communities have, in many ways,
Thank you so much, Michelle.
contributed not only to the betterment of our society, but also to the economic, political betterment of this country. Thank you, Yipar Dios.
Sometimes people get out of their cars after a car accident like a dummy, and cars hit them. Or you have a vagrant who's walking on the freeway. Oy, it's got a conch. Um, yeah. You have homeless people that are walking on the side of the freeway sometimes, too. Is that Mr. Herman? It is. Look at him, right there. There he is.
I have the honor and privilege of receiving a dance, una danza, right here in our chambers. And please, big round of applause for all our elders and representatives here of the First Nations, of the first caretakers of this land. Thank you.
So he's misbehaving. He got in trouble before they even started it. They didn't even start the meeting yet, and he's like, alright, guys, you guys gotta stop fucking around back there. Herman, you too. His name is Armando Hermans. I don't know. Could have some Native American in him. He's definitely Latino. I mean, like a few, like a month ago or so, we heard him speak. He was bilingual for there for a moment. Spoke well, so you could tell. He speaks, he's fluent in Spanish. He may not speak it here a whole lot, but he definitely is that. He definitely is bilingual. No, Leroi, I'm bilingual. There's a difference. Am I Latino? No. I know a lot of Latinos. I have a lot of Latino friends. Went to school all Latino. Worked with a lot of Latinos from everywhere, especially when I was working with the tree company. You had Ecuadorians, Salvadorians, Mexicans, Colombians. And funny enough as it is, a lot of them didn't like each other. They were so proud, you know, about their country. They'd get in one argument about soccer or something. Was half of you over there, the other half over here. Like, it was wild. I would, I would have thought, my dumb thought was, okay, well, they're Latino. They all must love each other. No, no, no. They got some, uh, they got some choice words for each other in certain moments. Me, I'm just American, man. That's what I am. I'm American. I'm a human American. That's what I am. I mean, of course, people could look at me as they do. Can't stop that. Motherfucking America. That's it. I'm not ashamed to say it. I love this country. Only been to 13 other countries besides this one. And again, it was fun to be in all of them, but I want to be in this one more than all of those, as nice as all of those were. YouTube curse, for sure. You mean what? What they're doing? See, Jason, how he has his ass just a little bit on it? Could have, could have laid anywhere he wanted, Jason. Got up, still laid right there. I'm Latinx, right? But you gotta say it right. I'm first generation Latinx. That's what they can claim. They claim they're first generation. Man, those headdresses are awesome. How many feathers? How long did it take to make those headdresses? It's one thing I really do love to see, um, with all the Indian stuff. It's so colorful, you know? Bro, some of this shit must have took so long to make. Look at that, look at that. You're telling me that that was made in a week? No fucking way. Sup, Terry? Good to see you. Yeah, I think they were making fun of, you know, the lady that comes in all the time with the, uh, she says she's a first-generation Latinx. Yeah, man, these are dope. Even look at the rattle. Look, can you see the rattle in his hands? Shit, of course, the fuck camera. I mean, dude, there's nothing plain about anything. You notice that? There's nothing plain about anything they wear. Everything is super detailed. Look at the little kid with the, with the head, with the noise-canceling headphones. Welcome to 2023, ladies and gentlemen. I love it. Protect the little one's ears. Look at his ears. Look at him. He's in the little swath on her belly with the noise-canceling headphones. I wish they'd fucking stop moving the camera so much so we can get a look at some of the stuff. This homie done wore the fucking Walmart sweater like I'd wear. Come on, bro. Supposed to dress up. Look at all these folks. Dude, look at the shield he's got. That's rad, dude. Dude, you see the snake? Look at the snake. Dude, it's a, it's a snake wrapped up on an eagle. Did you see that on his staff? Bro, there's, like, I'm trying to tell you, there is nothing you're seeing these people wear, down to the motherfucking rattle, that probably didn't take a month to make. This shit is wild. Beautiful colors. Look at it, look, 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 look at him. Dude, that staff is dope. They're cursing the same council. Well, they did say it's supposed to be a El Nino year this year, back-to-back. I'm loving it, man. I can't wait for all the rain. Yet, we haven't had it. Well, I can't say we haven't had any. It rained the other night for 10 minutes. It's really weird. Last week, on like Sunday or whatever. I love that weather, man. I hope we get a really good season this year. Farmers need it, we need it, everyone. The lakes, the rivers, we need it. Everything needs it. Clean downtown LA, we need it. There you go. Look, 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 look. I wish they would just hold the camera. Look at him, he's the wolf. I love him. I love it. Imagine the security checkpoint. Yeah. Bro, her headdress is so sick. Look at that. Look at the drum. Look at the drum. You see the drum? You see how the drum's completely carved on the sides of the drum? It's not just some plain ass drum. It's completely carved. He's got art on his. Uh, yes, Rick, we are an hour and twenty minutes in, but you gotta remember, these dummies were twenty-eight minutes late. I think it was about twenty-eight minutes late they were before they even started. But I could only assume it's because they had to get so many people in there. Dude, look at it. Look at it. Dude, cool as fuck. Which one do I like the most? I mean, I don't know as far as the headdresses. I mean, his is pretty dope with those feathers. I mean, I don't know if those are dyed or what bird that would come from. An ostrich or something? Probably the second one right here. Hers right there. That one there. Almost look like peacock feathers or, and look how wide and long they are. I've never seen a bird that had no feathers like that. So I don't know. I don't know where they're getting them. Remember, I come from fucking Hollywood. We don't see, fucking squirrels are rare. I had to move to see a, see a hawk. Never saw a hawk until I moved.
Deep gratitude to Henadal Lassaro.
Decades before I saw a hawk.
He's one of the highest ranking dancers. Thank you, Henadal Lassaro, for bringing your team to, to bring this ceremonial dance into city hall chambers. To let people recognize and uplift the beautiful culture that we have here. Thank you again.
Well, I can think of.
We also had some participants from, uh, one of the Mayan, uh, ball games. Uh, Marcos, tell me the name of your players, please.
Ishimkat.
Thank you. And you saw that, that ball, that is the one where you hit it with the hip. And so we were also blessed to have them in this space. Thank you so much. Um, bringing a little balance back into the chambers on this land. And now I would, uh, like to present, uh, some of our representatives with some certificates.
And Councilmember Hernandez, if you can, before you, you do that, I would like to recognize Councilmember Rodriguez.
I bet it is, Terry. Cause then you get to hear the real thunder, the drums and all that shit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
This sound guy sucks. We know that. Oh, here we go. She's gonna pander.
Uh, for leading this very special presentation. Uh, but I want to thank everybody that is here that helped us accomplish something that took way too long to accomplish. And that was the establishment of Indigenous Peoples' Day and that recognition in twenty seventeen. Uh, it was among the first big votes that I was a part of.
It's always about her.
Becoming elected to this esteemed body.
She loves to pat herself on the back. Hold on, Monica. Here we go.
When I think that it took till twenty seventeen to formally acknowledge and embrace the history that has so, for so long been suppressed. It was wrong.
Can't be about the people you're honoring. Has to be about you.
And it was, it was a long moment, but it took too long for us to get there. And so I want to thank you for bringing it because frankly, this history deserves more than one day of recognition for the years. For the years of efforts to suppress,
It's fifty guns.
to silence the history that is California, that is Los Angeles, that is these United States of America. And so I just want to thank you.
Oh, cracks girls up there. Look at her. You see her back there? Puffing all the crack.
And, uh, you know, uh, having the esteemed pleasure and privilege of representing the community of California.
Too many cracks.
In my district, the San Fernando Mission is erected, but was done so at the hands of the native peoples that were forced to help construct it.
It's true, dag. Silly me, right?
President Ortega and I have talked about the incredible amount of work that we have before us to make sure that that history is not lost, that it is preserved, and that we continue together in solidarity to fight for that true reconciliation that uplifts the contributions and the history of the native peoples of this country and this land that we are also fortunate to be here on. And so I just want to say thank you all so very much. Uh, I, it was not lost on me when I saw that beautiful little baby. Uh, how important it is to maintain and continue this incredible history and preservation. It is one to be proud of. It is one that we should all celebrate and embrace, uh, because we would not be here if not for those important histories and stories. But we still have so much more to do. Thank you so much. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. But let's celebrate that every day.
Yeah, early day, early day. There's um, I can see him back there.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rodriguez. And thank you for, for noting that, that vote in twenty seventeen that this, uh,
Yeah, we're an hour and fifteen minutes in and we haven't even done anything yet.
heroic vote, historic vote. And we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the incredible work of our former colleague, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell.
And just to let you know, there's been shows that have been less than an hour and fifteen minutes where they actually came in and did all the work and talked to people and left. That's gotta tell you how long these presentations are. And I don't even know if there's another one. There might be another one after this.
To cast that vote in twenty seventeen. Uh, Councilmember Hut.
Over, under on another?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes or no on another presentation after this?
Cola, I rise just to really uplift what Councilmember Hernandez has done today, which is to bring indigenous people into the chambers. Chambers that have made so many laws that are not respective
Somebody dropped a bat.
of indigenous people. In this time, and I can't say it enough, when, uh, indigenous people, people of color, black people are trying to be erased throughout the country.
Erased? How are you trying to be erased? Come on, you goddamn race baiting piece of shit. Who's trying to erase you and how? Tell me, please. Say, say.
And thank you. Thank you for really uplifting.
If anybody is trying to erase you, it'd be Planned Parenthood.
Councilmember Padilla.
You know, just to kind of echo, um, what meant, what was mentioned by Councilmember Rodriguez and more specific details from you, President Krikorian. You know, I'm really proud of, uh, Councilmember Hernandez. You really brought this conversation.
Really?
That started in Los Angeles a few years ago. You brought it home. I'm so excited that we can finally, um, add this to the archives of LA history.
Glad she did her hair today.
Way overdue. You know, I too recently went through a journey of looking at my, uh, background. Uh, twenty, twenty plus percent, you know, indigenous. I'm super excited to continue to know.
Twenty plus, not just twenty, alright?
And see what, you know, who are the, uh, what is, who can I say, um, is also part of me and my story, especially, um, as someone who loves to go to Mexico, you know, and really understand more about it. So thank you for elevating this and I hope that more people are encouraged to really look into everything, um, that has to do with our past and especially being from Los Angeles.
That's what I'm saying, Terry. Like, what was that? Come on, really? Like, that, that took literally ten seconds for you to flip your hair to one side, put the thing on it, and we're done.
Inspiring, uplifting presentation that we've had in these council.
Come on. Not one minute on your hair. You know you're on television every morning.
I want to give credit and, and honor to you for bringing all of these incredible Angelos together.
You didn't put no makeup on. So what you spent your time doing?
Uh, and I want to thank all of you for inspiring us so much. Uh, even those of us who may not share Native American ancestry, uh, many of us recognize what it is like to be, uh, of an indigenous nation that is subject to genocide. And, uh, for all of us, uh, who have experienced that sort of thing.
You know she didn't wash it then. But I get it. A lot of girls don't wash their hair every day because it dries the hair out. Yeah, I get it. Sometimes they go a day or so.
Can survive even in the face of the most horrendous, uh, affronts to humanity.
You're not here every day. I think that would be the day you'd wash it.
Been so uplifting and inspiring to have you all here. So we thank you very, very much. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I really appreciate all the, the support and your kind words, colleagues. But I'm just a conduit to all of these folks who have been doing this work for decades, who have brought this culture, this, this energy into the city hall. So please, can we give a big round of applause to our groups here, our elders representing? Representing on Indigenous Peoples' Day. And, you know, just like this was passed in twenty seventeen and set a wave across the country. Um, we are going to present you with some certificates, but I just want to be very clear.
Cause she's all about herself. That's why her hair always looks good.
Within me and I'm sure other colleagues on the council, you have a full commitment to putting resources behind the efforts. That means money to figuring out how we get land back. And I'm saying that out loud because I am committing to helping with that, to figuring that out, to making sure that there's indigenous representation in all of our government. And soon, hopefully on council as well. But I just wanted to share that, that we wanted to bring you in here, but we're making commitments to fight alongside you to make that happen. So thank you for being here. Now I'd like to present you all, uh, from the, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to present you all with the certificate recognizing Monday, October ninth, twenty twenty-three as Indigenous Peoples' Day here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Cindy. And Sheri. Thank you.
I want to know how much these things cost, these little, little framed pictures that they give them. I mean, man, cause we're giving out four of those day, four, five, sometimes every single, three times a week.
Alright, everybody squeeze in. This is a tough, tough photo with this many people. Everybody squeeze in tight.
And you say to yourself two hundred times a year, what's the bill for that? No joke, I bet you it's a hundred grand. I bet you someone's making a hundred thousand a year just making these, these little things to give away. Those things right there. Bet. Bet if we really looked into just what we're paying for those, it's a hundred grand a year that we are paying to give those out. Think they're a thousand apiece? Nah, I don't know if they're that much. Who knows?
Thank you all very, very much.
It's probably a contract for a hundred thousand and they make the amount that you need, which usually can't exceed a certain number, so they'll understand that. So they'll, kind of a lot, you know, certain ones for certain, a certain amount for each person.
Thank you again very much, Councilmember Hernandez, and to all of our guests. I'd like to also recognize that we have a group here, uh, today from the USC Saul Price School of Public Policy, the International Public Policy and Management Program,
I told you. Bro, we're
uh, which is a
Hour twenty-two minutes in and we're still not gonna get to work.
supports career advancement of entry level and mid-career professionals, um, who come from around the world. Uh, and so we have student, Saul Price students today here from China, Costa Rica, India, Indonesia, Kazakhstan, South Korea, Taiwan,
And bet we're gonna have three speakers inside and three speakers on the phone and we're done, homie.
And of course, the United States, uh, who are here with their professor, Rim Khaki. And so I just want to recognize them and acknowledge them and thank them for being here with us in the, in our council chambers. Welcome everyone.
Oh, Rim's getting dunked on by both those chicks.
We are ready to begin, uh, the public comment portion of our meeting.
Oh, finally.
So, Mr. Clerk and Mr. City Attorney.
So those poor people had to wait for all that to get ten seconds of, of standing ovation.
Remind everyone of our, uh, process for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated, on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call six six nine two five four five two five two.
Wanna come down, spend an hour getting there for that?
And use meeting ID number
Wanna call in? Here's the number.
five three five eight four six six and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Let me repeat, call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone.
Let's look at the fantastic Sam's cut. Oh, for sure.
Please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on.
That is a super cuts, thirty dollar haircut if I've ever seen one. Look, his calic is sticking up because they cut it too short in the back.
You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment. And one minute for general public comment if you wish. Please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic.
That's a flowby cut?
Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can.
Uses the flowby. That's awesome.
If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are speaking on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to immediately and clearly get on topic.
I'm hitting the sherbet banger. It's like sherbet banger.
If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker.
Don't know the cross. For what I'm hitting right now. We had the camlily first.
The items open for public comment are items one and sixteen through twenty.
Then we're gonna do some of the flow, the FLO.
You may of course speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject-mannered jurisdiction during your one minute of general public comment. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself.
He might be the cutest cat ever. I'm just letting you know. He really might be.
If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your time and we will move on to the next caller.
Alright, we're gonna do this one more time. Ladies in the room, smash or pass. Smash or pass. Remember, makes a good living. Wears a suit every day. Could be a really nice guy. Smash or pass.
Keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute.
Oh, Janelle says pass.
Second, if you are listening to the meeting on another device.
There's one pass. There's a pass from Gypsy Renee.
Please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it is your turn to speak.
Pass from Calamity Girl, pass from Malice, pass from Randy, pass from Jill.
Between the timed delay and feedback, it will cause a real ill conclusion if you continue to listen on your other devices.
Emiliano says he wouldn't even bone it. Uh, Christina Hernandez is passing. Lisa says pass.
Alright, thank you very much. I'm gonna call a number of names.
Just you know, twenty-three percent of this room on average is women. Just you know, there's a good amount of women in here. Fair amount.
You do not need to speak in the order in which I call you, but I would ask that you not come up to the side.
Well, LG, you could be the first one to bone. Everybody else is passing.
Until I call your name so we avoid, uh, crowding problems. So I'm gonna call Emily Gartenberg.
Could be hung like a horse and shit. Then you'd really love his ass. You know what I mean?
Kelly Lally. Marty Cortez, Matt Rosell.
Could be the nicest guy, dresses nice, got a huge dick, makes good money, but has a fucking boulder head. Y'all can't deal with the boulder head, huh? Alright, here we go. First speaker.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning. Emily Gartenberg, item fourteen.
So item number fourteen is not open for public comment, but you have one minute for general public comment.
General comment then, thank you. Good morning, uh, members of the, uh, the city council. My name is Emily Gartenberg with Jobs to America.
Terry would bone a stipulated agreement.
Item fourteen encourages the federal government to modernize federal grant rules to empower Los Angeles to be able to utilize strategies that connect quality jobs to our communities. These grant rules, known as the Uniform Guidance, prohibit the use of worker-centered programs like local hire on most federally funded projects outside of transportation construction projects. However, local hire policies can create significant new job opportunities for low-income local residents. In fact, we've seen the successes of local and targeted hire programs here in LA with LA Metro's Construction Careers and Manufacturing Careers programs, which have connected local residents to good jobs. Policy tools like these have been used for years in local and state-funded projects to create high-quality jobs and revitalize local economies.
Mr. Sax is right there signing up.
With this rule change process moving forward, it's critical that LA City Council's voice is heard. I respectfully urge your iVote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Look at him back there, smoking a joint. Ah, I fucking love Mr. Sax.
Good morning.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Sure. My name is Kelly Lally and I'm speaking on general public comment.
That's pretty stupid.
Great. Hi, my name's Kelly. I am from Councilwoman Yaroslavski's office and I'm here today asking the city council to support the city ordinance,
Shill.
which ensures humane treatment of animals in rodeos by prohibiting the use of painful devices such as electric prods and flank straps. The industry argues that these animals are bred to buck, but let's be clear, they're breeding these animals to be fearful of these painful devices um, in order to produce an exaggerated effect. The result is unnecessary suffering, broken backs and shattered legs, many of which go unreported. It's time Los Angeles follows the lead of many other cities within California and take this critical step to ban abuse as entertainment. Thank you.
So in Iowa, now you're allowing criminals to do to children? Sounds awesome.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Which office is he from?
Matt Rosell and I'm speaking under public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
My name is Matt Rosell. I'm the campaigns manager for the Animal Legal Defense Fund, living in CD ten. I'm speaking in support of Councilmember Blumenfield's rodeo ordinance. What began as a way of life for ranchers in the eighteen hundreds has become an inhumane spectacle, exaggerating traditional cowboy activities for the recognition and prizes. The view of animal welfare has shifted and continues to trend towards phasing out cruel forms of entertainment, regardless of the historical context. The growing number of state and local laws adding regulations to rodeo events is a clear The growing number of state and local laws adding regulations to rodeo events is a clear indication of this shift. It is time to consider the entrance, the interests of the animals forced to perform. Rodeo events depend on painful devices to coerce the animals into exaggerated fear-based behaviors and injuries are all too common. I urge the city council, please, in this humane form of entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
You want more targets? Can only go so far.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Hi, my name is Leslie Shanley and I am here to speak under general comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Leslie Shanley from Council District Five and I'm speaking under public comment in favor of the rodeo ordinance. Um, as a member of the American Bar Association Animal Law Committee, I feel compelled to voice my opposition to instrumentality used on rodeo animals. These animals are subjected to environments that are fundamentally unnatural and stressful. They lack the ability to consent to being a part of such events. Their participation is coerced and they are provoked into displaying wild behavior with the use of flank straps, spurs and other instruments for the purpose of entertainment. Calf roping and bull riding push animals to their physical limits for spectators' amusement, but they suffer injuries, stress and even death. Our understanding of animal welfare is evolving and it is time for us to reevaluate our choices and question whether such maltreatment is justified for the sake of sport. Um, let us take advantage of this moment and move past these archaic practices and find alternative forms of entertainment that do not rely on the exploitation of animals.
Larry, you can go to Kick, YouTube, or DLive. I'm live on all those other besides Twitch. Yeah, Rumble, for some reason, Rumble didn't kick on.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
We'll be, uh, live on Rumble tomorrow night.
Hi, my name is Melanie Bean. I'm a constituent in Council District Four, making general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
You're banned into it.
I'm here to offer my full support for the rodeo ordinance as proposed by Councilmember Blumenfield.
Well, there's Kick and DLive. Could try those.
As voting members of city council, you have the power to demonstrate kindness and empathy towards animals and save them from lives of cruelty and abuse. You can put an end to the senseless violence and needless suffering the rodeo's cause. Last week you received copies of the rodeo reporting forms that describe the terrifying horror these rodeo animals endure. They are subject to broken bones, bleeding, soft tissue injuries and very slow agonizing deaths. It's time to transition from forms of violence that weaken Los Angeles to a proud and just city with a higher consciousness that respects life and freedom for all. Please vote to support this rodeo ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak on?
Um, I'm Nati Casanova. I live in CD-14 and I would like to speak in support of Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's proposed rodeo ordinance, general public comment.
Blob.
So you have one minute.
So today, we've been celebrating a lot of indigenous culture, just beautiful, and I have to say, one of the things in indigenous culture that I always admired was their appreciation and respect for animals. Rodeos have not been a part of culture in Southern California even, or California in general, until the late eighteen hundreds, very late, and then they became a little more popular early nineteen hundreds and then we had big events coming in, actually, in the right, uh, about nineteen eighties, nineteen seventies, around there, and so they haven't actually been part of Los Angeles culture for that long. And we can still celebrate the traditions and culture of the West, of, you know, Southern California without hurting animals. So please vote to ban rodeos. Thank you.
Well, she knows they, they hunted them to eat them. I think she's getting at the fact that, um, they didn't use it for sport or just for fun to watch them. It was either to kill them, to eat them, or to, you know, obviously get milk or whatever. That was it.
And Bishop Henry Williams.
Bishop? Oh, the bishops in the house.
Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Uh, Candido Maris Cowboy Bakaylo, uh, who has given up his spurs because of the great message that you folks have given and Mr. Uh, Blumenfield, uh, I want all public items and, uh, public comment and all items.
So you have three minutes for the items. That's item one as amended and sixteen through twenty and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you, sir. Item twenty is about juvenile justice and prevention, et cetera. You know, a lot of you don't know the effect of some of this funding that you folks do. I will tell you personally, because I've been to almost every prison in the state of, uh, California, that these programs are working and, and individuals like Leaky Rodriguez
Stop committing crime, bro.
and a gentleman that he works with, uh, uh, Darcy, these individuals are angels, they're saints, they're warriors and they go out of the community with this funding and they impact, uh, and they're changing lives in our community. So thank you for the continual funding. I know my councilman, John Lee, and I stand with him. Today I stand here tomorrow and whatever happens, we'll pick him up or carry him, whatever it takes, because I'm gonna judge him on what he has done through his entire life, not what happens or what may have happened, uh, based on somebody else. Uh, public comment, if I may, sir.
Yes, he's wearing a swastika. He always does.
Thank you. You know, there was a gentleman, uh, there was an animal that called in the other day. Last week he attacked, uh, my Jewish brothers and sisters. What does he do? This week, he insults, he insults my Latina mothers, sisters, who go out and do what they have to do to feed their family. And then on top of that, he really insults him by saying that he then goes to the bathroom after they do their thing, uh, they're, they're clean.
Talking about lobster.
Does something else there. I would love for this individual to come here, be gutsy. You know, Herman, I don't agree, but at least he's here. So I would like to offer a thousand dollar reward for the identification and identification and verification of this individual. And the three people back there who are supposedly, uh, nonviolent and, uh, say everybody else, Mr. De Leonis Prejudice, uh, you know, they're the ones that attacked me and caused the dental problems I'm having now, and I will be submitting that to the city council. But Mr. President, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
He's getting lobster and whoever called in about me confused because lobster didn't say that. Lobster said what he said about the, the ladies, which he shouldn't have said, but he's confusing two people. He really is.
General comment and supportive of item fourteen.
Lobster didn't say the first thing. He did not.
So you have one minute to general public comment.
Great. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Valerie Lisarraga with Jobs to Move America. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comments in support of item fourteen. For decades, an outdated, an outdated set of federal grant rules known as the Uniform Guidance have kept local communities here in Los Angeles and across the country from receiving the full economic benefits of federal investments. Under the Uniform Guidance, cities and states are prohibited or deterred from using policy tools within federally funded projects that propose family sustaining jobs for working people, such as local and targeted hiring. These regulations are a major roadblock for local governments like the LA City Council to implement policies that support their communities. This is a serious missed opportunity, but it's one that we can rectify now. Thanks to a national, national campaign, the Biden administration is taking steps to update these restrictive regulations. This resolution sends a clear message that Los Angeles wants to see these rules changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is, my name is Harriet Elliott and I want to.
Uh, over or under twenty, guys? Over or under twenty? Because he's coming up.
Because in the past, he has talked while I talk and got the floor. Okay? I want him to absolutely shut up. Herman Herman.
Alright, go ahead and speak to him.
I'm speaking on public comment, alright? Um, I am grieving for my doctor who died, Philip Carlson. He's a doctor at, um, Los Angeles City College. He is as big as a house. This is, uh, uh, he, but he's a jocular fellow. And he, a white man who went through seminary and, uh, raised two black kids and two, one of them died from cancer. Uh, he was killed with cancer. Uh, Robert Duncan says that de-directed energy weapons can cause cancer. Uh, now, Philip Carlson was a red. He's very, very progressive. And if you're thinking, I don't care about reds, okay? Uh, if he's a commie, I don't want to hear about it, okay? You think it's, doesn't even concern you. In the library, I spent a lot of time in the library. One of the African-American leaders of the book club is a red. Her name's Samantha, okay? They tiptoed around to get her.
Speaker, your time is expired.
To stop.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
She goes, she goes to the library, guys, where the berries lie. Whole bunch of lyin' berries in there. Get it in there.
And as the speaker's coming up, Mr. Spindler, you've already signed up. You don't need to go to the, uh, monitor to sign up with more fake names. You've already signed up. Have a seat. Herman, sit down.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Um, let's see, I think it's eighteen, twenty and general comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Alright, so eighteen is a street banner for the Valley Village Neighborhood Council. Um, so you know, seems like, of course, we all know the city doesn't even actually respect the neighborhood councils or anything, um, and you know, listen to what they say when they come up to give public comment, um. I mean, there's some good people in the neighborhood councils, some, some really bad people too, um. But yeah, but you never listen to the good things, but, but as soon as they suggest something bad, then you're all on it, um. But, but again, I don't know why we need the street banners, um, you know, we could be using the money for something else.
Smash or pass, ladies. Smash or pass.
Alright, twenty, it looks like is like a grant for the Department of Justice, uh, from the Department of Justice, um, for community-based violence intervention and prevention. You make the grants, you make this all so confusing, but no money, but if this is anything for the cops, no money for the cops, um, they're overfunded, one cent is too much, um, and, uh, um, we don't need more grants for the LAPD. Alright, general comment. Um, so this Monday is the one-year anniversary of the Fed tapes, um, becoming the LA Times article, the Knock LA article and things like that, um. Meanwhile, you still have Kevin De Leon on the city council. He do an Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, presentation with, um, Kevin De Leon in the room, even though, um, Kevin De Leon made, um, anti-indigenous comments on the Fed tapes. And Kevin De Leon, Nury Martinez, Gil Setio, Ron Herrera, um, and threatened to disenfranchise indigenous people in the redistricting process, worked to do that, um. So Kevin, you need to resign. Um, Paul, you need to, and the rest of the council, you all need to do something to get him to resign. Um, U N S C, you need to object when, um, people are being removed. You can do that and force a vote of the whole council, um, yeah.
Oh, right, on the money. So if you said, really was a push today, nobody won. Because it wasn't over nor was it under.
What items would you like to speak on?
Items nineteen, twenty and general public comment.
I guess that goes from twenty and under, so really the under's got it. There really is no push unless it goes over. I don't know.
Thank you. Uh, brought to us from Paul and Heather. Thanks you two. Relative to the city's position regarding the Southern California Regional Authority's Sustainable Locomotives, uh, program,
Trailer Swift.
reconnecting communities and neighborhoods, um, collective effort to transform and modernize passenger rail service through the award of this grant. I love to see things like this. I'm kind of a nerd for trains and public transportation. Um, so we need to see more of this, um, these kinds of motions and it would be cool if all of you would commit to using public transportation to come to work, um, and ride the train down to city hall like I do when I come here.
Good luck with that.
Um, and that might motivate you to do more, to solve the myriad problems that, um, we experience, uh, in, in, on metro and in our, our public transportation systems. Item twenty is a two million dollar grant, uh, for community-based violence intervention and prevention.
It's only for um, not uh.
Uh, we know that what prevents violence is meeting people's basic needs and giving them education, food, housing, um, just empirically policing does not prevent violence.
How many shirts does she have on? Flannel?
When it happens or sometimes perpetuates violence. So maybe some of this grant money can go to training the LAPD on, um, their trigger-happy fingers and help them not murder the people that they are sworn to protect. Um, but it would be cool to also see some of this funding go into meeting people's basic needs, get them housing, get them food, get them education, because those are the things that have been proven to, um, prevent violence.
There we go. Let's get us a song, twelve-time winner.
The people of LA have cried out that your continuing presence worsens our pain and causes actual ongoing harm. Let's repair, heal and restore Kevin De Leon compared a child to a handbag. Nury said that child needs a beat down. Let me take him around the corner. Kevin, give us a resignation. Paul Krikorian, stop agendizing his items. The whole council made promises not to work with him. Let a new day begin.
Thank you. I'm gonna call a few more names now.
Charles is a twelve-time Grammy winner. She's so hot. Come on, bro, let's get us some booty.
Amelia Boreya and Arnold Sacks.
Arnold Sacks coming up soon, hell yeah. Mr. Herman, Mr. Sacks. I don't see a cat's boyfriend, though.
Herman, I didn't call you. Sit down.
He's like a little kid, dude. Like a little kid on Riddler, just.
I signed up, Brown Act. Niggas, I wanna sign up on all motherfucking items, including non-agenda fucking public comment, fool.
So you have three minutes for the items. That's item one as amended and sixteen through twenty and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
I got that, boo. I got that, boo. Communication from the city niggers, officer and the fucking bitch city attorney relative to the United States Department of Justice programs based on violence, intervention and prevention. What do you mean I'm not on topic, nigga? I'm talking about item twenty. I'm not going in a sequence of what you want me to say and you're gonna censor me. I'm gonna do what the program says here.
Speak to the agenda.
Communication from the city attorney dated February tenth, twenty twenty-three. So this nigga knows he's on topic regarding the executive grant agreement between the United State Department of Justice to fuck Los Angeles, fuck the city attorney, fuck the DA and fuck LAPD to find out whether or not we can accept this grant and award to sacrifice ourselves from a dirty nigger. You. Then, dirty nigger, on number eighteen, Krikorian, jackass Armenian campaign to promote the Valley Village neighborhood. To increase participation, you gotta learn to speak Krikorian. And while you're doing so in your neighborhood council Valley Village, non-event street banners will have pictures of a
She's straight crying. She's wiping tears off her face.
Some jackass idiot moron, stupid fool, because we're gonna hang the Ottoman flag in the valley.
Okay, you're not on topic. You're gonna go to general public comment right now. General public comment right now.
Alright asshole, you want me to go to non-agenda public comment?
Talking about the Turk flag.
Fuck you Armenians. Thank you, the Ottoman Turkish army, for saving our country from the racist, prejudiced, shithole Armenian dictator up there. Goddamn racketeer and damn fucking racist fascist bitch. A dirty nigger, send the Jews back to Israel. Let's give them back to the garden. Save America. Let's go back to constitutional betterment. Bury the niggers. We intend to do our part. Give our state rights. Freedom for the whites. Nigger will have to fight for every inch he gets from now on. And the reason why is because
Made the developer responsible for creating small parks in the area where they were doing all this business. Now that you have no Quimby fees, you're not getting any parks built, which makes sense if you're a moron. Now, number eighteen refers to legacy railroads. So I'm wondering if that includes the Alameda Construction Authority and the Alameda Corridor that has the Underground Railroad? Or does that include the Birmingham Northern and Santa Fe locomotives? Are you talking about the railroad tracks? Are you talking about the locomotives and getting clean energy out of those engines? When is that gonna occur? Now, number twenty-two. I think we have a little bit of a discussion here. Number twenty-two.
So I only see twenty items on today's agenda.
Oh, okay, item number twenty. This is a community-based violence intervention initiative from 2022. So this is 2023. So is it for four years or is it for three years? When did this grant start? Grants run for twenty years. So when exactly did this grant start? Did it start in October of 2022? Or is it just starting this past October first? Because a one year makes a big difference. Three years, it's almost six hundred, could be seven hundred thousand dollars. Four years, it's five hundred thousand dollars. Now, my public comment is interesting. I've collected a whole bunch of LA Times and, um, daily newspapers. This one is a law. Laws plan to force hotels to become homeless shelters. This one is a law. Law City on ULP strike. This one is LA with periods. You see, this one here says LA Kevin De Leon, L period A period City Councilman. This one says software firm sues L period A period D period A period. That's Los Angeles District Attorney. This one says, don't miss LA's next big story, L period A period. This one says our L period A period leaders, it's important to-
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you, your time's expired. Your time's expired. Next speaker, please. And then after this-
Didn't even go to public comment.
And then anyone who signed up under one of these silly childish fake names, you're invited to come up as well.
Good afternoon. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
All of them and general comment. And I'm Susan Rocha from CD One.
You have three minutes for the items. That's item one and sixteen through twenty. And one minute for general public.
Okay. Uh, on item number twenty about the grant, I want to know if any of that money is going to help people that are innocent sitting in jail. Um, I was falsely accused by a crime, for a crime, by Divine Savior Catholic Church priest Albert Praga Sam and his lying church members. I stood up and went to a jury trial and was found not guilty. Also priest Mark Ortiz from Divine Savior also falsely accused me, and I went to court with him and he lost too.
So speaker, I'm not sure which item you're speaking on. Uh, can you please identify the item or I'm gonna move you to general public comment?
Well, I did say at the beginning, I'm on item number twenty about the grant.
Item number twenty is about a grant.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. I asked if you could use that money to help people that are falsely accused like me. People there, I was lucky, I got a non-bias jury found me not guilty. Now, this money could be used for people that are innocent sitting in jail, falsely accused like me. That they were not so lucky and were found guilty even though they're innocent. So I don't know what you're using this money for, but there are people that are falsely accused like me, sitting in jail, that need to be out. And it shouldn't be tomorrow, it shouldn't be thirty years like we see on the news. This money should be used to get people that are falsely accused and convicted, sitting in jail. And people like me that should get pub- well, I did get a good public defender, Mr. Christopher Kim, who is my hero, got me not guilty. Now, we need more funding for Public Defender's Office, and I don't know where this money's going, but I know one thing. I was falsely accused by two priests, and two priests lost. That's pretty sick. And they're nothing but bullies trying to shut me up because of their noise from Divine Savior Catholic Church. Can I go to, uh-
Yes, general public comment, sure. You bet.
You know, these two bull- this church and these two bullies should not get away with falsely accusing me, taking me to court and losing. And the prosecutor, Gabriel Taylor, Taylor, who keeps fighting me over my factually innocent. And why? She cannot admit that they made a mistake. They cannot admit that they were malicious, I was maliciously prosecuted, even though they had no witnesses and no evidence? And three witnesses from the church who never saw anything because it never happened? Really? That's not right. I hope that the new city attorney will start monitoring the, um, their prosecutors, not like Mike Fur did, who never did. Never watched over his cases, never watched over his prosecutors. He didn't care if innocent people went to jail. And the last thing I want to say is Kevin De Leon and Sidio are not racist people. Otherwise, you're all racist because you all support your own races. So either you're all racist or-
Thank you very much.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you, your time's expired. I'll also call Lionel Mars, who I saw just, so come on up.
Where's Spindler?
And then that will, uh, close-
Bullshit, where's Spindler?
And we'll go next to the phone.
Bullshit, where's Spindler?
Oh, okay. Yes, there, Circle K, Mr. Dog Eater, all items and general comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
That's right, everybody. So we look at the track maps. I know what track maps are. What they are is they're shaped like a big black dick. And they get the items-
Go to the agenda items, Mr. Spindler.
Hold on, he's talking about what the track maps look like. That's on topic, right? Uh, is that right, Kevin?
Look at the chicks behind them. Look at the girls behind them.
So of course, what you do with a track map is you get a black plastic bag. And you fill it up with a lot of cash.
Wiping tears off her face.
As Kevin, uh, and we were explaining the other day, please don't use sequential notes. Go to different banks, mix the cash up. God damn it, you people. You keep using sequential notes, don't you understand?
So, Mr. Spindler, I don't know what item you're talking about with regards to sequential notes. So please stick to the items. This is your last warning. I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
The payoffs on the track maps, do not interrupt. Jesus Christ. What do I look like, a puppet? You're not a puppet. Yes. Now we get to Paul Martin Krikorian and that filthy banner he's putting up. Yes, Valley Village. It is a shit fucking hole. And you're trying to promote it like it's not a shithole. I know differently. Once every year, I drive through there looking for cheap gas. You know, and see how many prostitutes are on their Lancashire Boulevard and Royal Canyon. And that's what it is. Paul Martin Krikorian, known as the petty pink face dictator cocksucker, is trying to promote this evil institution. Do not promote these neighborhood councils. Neighborhood councils are made up of little assholes that cry about thirty-four thousand dollars a year and how to fucking give it to their nonprofit friends and launder it through their contracts. Yes, Kevin, we refer to that as micro Weezer. Not to be confused with the great one that we all love so much.
Jose Weezer.
And then, of course, domestic violence is also on the agenda. Yes, we've all been abused, haven't we? You know what causes domestic violence? Liquor licenses, yes. Every one of you on this council that passes a liquor license, you're contributing to the beatings and torture of women. Because what happens is the old man comes home and slams down a few, and then he goes, "Huh, I want my steak." And then the wife goes, "But you didn't buy any food." And the next thing you know, "Ew," you get fucking slapped like that. "Ew."
Like that.
Yes, now we get to general comment. And there's a video by the great DJ. DJ Krikorian, yes, we have DJ Krikorian. And DJ Krikorian has a new video about John Lee's trips to Las Vegas. Let's give him a hand, yes, yes. That's right. Yes, as Imelda wipes her mouth without a towel. Look at her hair. And then, of course, to honor Native Americans and honor our great leader, we will now give the Atlanta Hawks, the Atlanta what? The Atlanta Braves. The Atlanta Braves tomahawk chop in honor of the Native Americans.
Are they gonna get mad that they're gonna do that? Because you know the brave fans do it.
Re-elect Kevin De Leon. Fuck the Dodgers too.
Ah!
Your time's expired.
Oh, he didn't like that.
Lionel Mars will be our last speaker here, and then we'll go to the phones.
He didn't like that when he said fuck the Dodgers.
Good afternoon, council members. It's been a while. I just want to say from a general public comment, speaking as an individual, I'm very disappointed the way the city council has treated Jamie Lauren York when I received that neighborhood council. She should be on the Ethics Commission. She's a strong advocate for ethics. Um, she's independent, she's bipartisan. And she knows the city charter very well, more than anyone else that I know. And I'm very disappointed that the city council did what they did to Ms. Jamie York. And number two, I encourage the city council to empower and strengthen the Ethics Commission. They have not met because of a lack of quorum. And we're very disappointed that they elect nominated and elected Alex Johnson, who is from Bson, Bryson Gillette, who's a political consultant. Jamie York should be on the commission. I was able to attend the Congress of Neighborhoods and I met Nancy Jackson from the Ethics Commission. And I learned a lot during the workshop. And I'm much more empowered to learn ethics and transparency and honesty. That's what we need in city council. I yield the balance of my time, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to the phones. We'll take fifteen minutes to comment on the phones.
It's almost three-thirty, you know, it's party time.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Caller, how does my vagina look? Shaved it. Caller, does it smell funny?
Go ahead, caller.
Caller with the last four digits, one-nine-nine-one, please press star six to unmute.
Yeah, that's a new caller.
All right, let's go to the next caller, please.
The other girl was there, um, she was there Friday.
Caller, which item would you like to speak on?
Took her Friday off.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Brock Landers, Los Angeles private detective. I'd like to get my hands on some shells and, uh, investigate their privates.
Which of the items would you like to speak on?
General public comment.
Okay, but you still need to speak to things that are within the jurisdiction of the city council. So go right ahead.
All right, settle down. Don't get mad at me because of the other people. It's not my fault that they're fuckers. You can't take that shit out on the other callers, right?
Go ahead and speak to-
You don't like it when you get lumped in with all the other people, you know, that do dishonest shit on the council, do you? So why should I be lumped in with, with the people that come in there and piss you off? Take a deep breath, tell me you're sorry, and we can move on. Okay. Uh, so seventeen, the city banners. I think we should get some banners for Monica and her accomplishments. She's getting older and if she has to keep patting herself on the back, she's going to dislodge Kate's shoulder like Barry Horowitz. Uh, number nineteen, I think that we need to look at, uh, short line and B and O railroad. Uh, it seems like the people that, uh, invest in short line and B and O are always making money. They probably know what they're doing with their tracks. Um, twenty, for, uh, I'm all for funding to help the youth like Fifty Guns was talking about. I think that we need more programs for the kids. We need to stop teaching the youth that they're victims and that they need to be criminals. We need people like Damon at Smoke and Scan to be role models for these kids. Teach these kids how to open their own business, be self-sufficient, and that they don't have to look for handouts and, and be somebody's token victim. Uh, general public comment. Monica, I hate to mansplain to you, but I think that you misspoke when you spoke about the 2017 vote. I think what you meant to say is look at how racist the Democrats are and have been throughout history. We've had a Democrat mayor since 1997. Why did it take us this long to recognize Indigenous people? Next time they tell you the other party is the racist party, ask them why it took until 2017. They really don't care about you. And for the people that are talking about the rodeo, it's pretty obvious that you never hooked up with a barrel racer. Do you know how hard it is to find a girl that knows how to ride what looks like a baby's arm holding a California Mandarin orange? And not complain about it feeling like it's touching their lungs? It's not easy. Dude, take a deep breath. Why don't you come over to Smoke and Scan this weekend, smoke a joint? You can relax and realize that we're not all out to get you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I love you, Brock.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, uh, general public comment, please.
So you have one minute.
Brock, you sound like one of the same weirdos you're talking about, man. Every time, I mean, you should be investigated for sexual activities. You're a private investigator? Listen to the way you speak. Come on, man. You're one of those weirdos who speak on About Chambers. The only difference is you're on the phone. At least they have the courage to show up and be booed or whatever. Now, uh, city council, uh, yesterday was sitting in and listening into, uh, the rules that you're gonna do for the committee? Think about that. You said being part and active in public interest. You need to be more precise because you're gonna have weirdos like this apply for those positions and the people next to them are gonna have to just comply with it or just go with it. Think about that rule, put that into those rules that these weirdos should not be able to apply. Uh, there was no phone access to you, so I couldn't speak in yesterday, but I listened in. Again, put that on the ethics-
Caller, your time has expired. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Morning, Rob Kwan, like to speak on general public comment. And, um, the celebration of Indigenous people say, I think it's just worth looking back to that vote since we all talk about who joined Joey Bucket and trying to both sides say, let's keep Columbus Day and we'll have Indigenous people some day, some other day. Gil Sadio. And what did we hear about Gil Sadio's feelings about the Indigenous people in those Fed tapes? We are approaching the one-year Fed tapeiversary. And, uh, you know, we had a vote on redistricting reform. Great to see, uh, having more than three days to read the CLA's report allowed our members, the staff to get up to speed. Here input from advocates. Good to see that that's finally in a somewhat passable shape. But we could have taken that vote a month ago if we had a more reasonable process where members could do their homework and have informed discussion, but whatever. Uh, it took you a year to get a substantive committee vote on advancing reforms. We got nine months till June for your deadline to get something on the ballot in November. Expansion's to be determined, you're pumping implementation on expansion. Um, you need to get that charter commission-
Mr. Kwan, your time has expired.
Committee's not gonna get it done.
Next speaker, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Go ahead, speaker. Go ahead, speaker.
Uh, yes, this is Jason. This is Jason, I'm a smoker scan view, and I'd say the gentleman came a little early there. You can get off my board, Brock, nuts.
And which items would you like to speak on?
I'm gonna recuse myself for all the items because I don't give a shit about any of that. Can I just get a minute of general comment?
All right, so you have one minute for general public comment. Uh, hold his time for a second. Mr. Spindler, I, I am unable to hear what the callers are saying because of your outburst. This is your final and form- your final formal warning. Do not disrupt the public comment. Go ahead, speaker, we're gonna start your time now.
There you go, there you go. Tell that bitch be cool. Aight, so anyway, little Johnny asked his mother what two words meant that, that the kids at school were say, were using. Bitch and pussy. Mom inhale sharply, but then said, "Oh, that's easy. Pussy is a cat like our little Tico. A, a bitch is a female doll like our Sandy. Thanks, Mom." He found his dad in the garage. Dad, the guys at school were using words I didn't, I don't understand. What word, son? Pussy and bitch. I asked mom, but she doesn't, she didn't, I don't think she told me the right meaning. Dad said, "Son, don't ask your mother about things like this."
Okay, I'm sorry, you're not speaking to anything that has to do with the jurisdiction of the city council. So either speak to us about city business or your time's expired.
Expired? I don't think you can count, but I had a minute.
Okay, next caller, please.
Ah, they dunked Jason.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Go ahead, speaker.
Caller with the last four digits.
Yes, it's Eric Previn. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Thank you, I'd like to give a general public comment. I'd like to speak on the available items. And can you just refresh my memory which ones they are?
So the, uh, you have three minutes for the items, and the items that are open for public comment are one and sixteen through twenty. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay. Um, well, I think that it's really touching that the Valley Village banner program is getting, getting kicked off. And, you know, it has been twenty years that that little valley village, which is neighbors to my, my studio city, were both little hamlets in the valley where Paul Krikorian was our tribal leader. For many years, it was council district two, and everything was clear, little, little onerous, but it was clear. Then there was the bait and switch and redistrict, and Caro was banging his desk because he was so upset. And yet all the trouble spots slipped into CD four where Nefia Rahman, uh, has nothing to do with it. So it's a perfect play. It's like a handoff to someone who's not in the game yet. But she is in the game. And we're hoping that she's gonna come forward, uh, and recognize that the Indigenous people of Studio City, like even just thirty years ago or forty years ago. Because every time when there's a re, you know, we certainly respect and honor the Indigenous. I would have thanked Hernandez for putting together a truly organic kind of a healing in City Hall, which was deeply, deeply moving. But we still have to, like Katie did for her rich people, stick up for the rich people in Studio City. Because we're not that rich. And the billionaires like Charlie Munger, who's trying to save the California museum by paying for affordable housing for professors. Forty million dollars to house people to come from around the world to loaf around the Huntington and study California. I, I do like California and I, I think it's worthy of, of study, but I think that, you know, you, you shouldn't be invading people's territorial spaces with terrible plans that are completely bait and switch with Edgar Coladie, by the way, at the front of the little van.
Mr. Previn, I'm sorry, can you please identify which of the items you're speaking on?
Sure, I said prevaricating. It means he's lying, basically, by saying Harvard Westlake's saying that they are allowing the public to have this great amenity. It's not even close. We won't even get near it. And it shouldn't be done because it's a walled city. Now, uh, getting to the next item, um, which, uh, is the track maps. You know, a zone change is required. And there's a fellow named Mark Pastrella. He works over at the county, he's the head of public work. He's a powerful guy, good guy, too. Um, and, uh, what he's gotta do is give Harvard Westlake a lease revision. But he can't do that in good faith at the moment because it's an odious plan, like out of The Simpsons, where Smithers is trying to take over Homer's little golf and tennis. So, good luck, you know, I mean, this is a tough one. I know Yaroslavski stood up for the, the people up in the canyon. I hope the people come around and realize, I hope Harvard Westlake realizes. That at the end of the day, it's not worth it and that they should try to do something that, are we at general public comment yet?
Coming up?
Okay, general public comment. First of all, I want to thank the city council, uh, in particular Rahman, Hernandez, and even Krikorian and John Wickham for trying to, you know, to do the best they can to slap together a program for choosing commissioners. I was tuning in for that briefly. Um, but I know it's confusing and I know it's like slightly awkward, and I think all this work is gonna be useful, but it has to be taken away. You guys can't do it. The idea of the Krikorian Independent Commission is just elaffable. I mean, I don't want to mock anybody except for everybody, but still, you've got to be kidding me. It does not make any sense. So I think, you know, that's not to say we're, you know, we're nowhere. We're, we're, we're moving it forward. The, I thought that the coherent plan of objective criteria upfront, you know, like you gotta be able to, A, reason right, B, understand big data. Believe me, the city clerk, get to the punchline. The city clerk and the ethics commission should also not be the ones handling this, I hate to say. I mean, are you kidding me?
No, Rahman's not there.
The city clerk is one of the sameest, the presumption of regularity in law.
Next caller, please.
This chick in the green hat kinda reminds me of Jessica Simpson when you see her face.
General public comment.
She looks like her.
All right, you'll have one minute. Go right ahead, please.
Thank you for acknowledging the historical erasure of communities and failing to not acknowledge-
That was AI. That was some AI shit. Well, what happened?
Sorry, go ahead. You can restart, uh, the time, please. Go right ahead.
You know, thanks, don't do that.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging the historical erasure of communities without acknowledging today, 2023.
Sounds like AI.
All city council members in the horseshoe, erasing members of their communities.
What are you doing, thanks?
Yes. How many of you have projects in your communities without even letting residents who live adjacent to these projects-
My God, really, dude?
Projects aware of your ideas that will affect them directly? How many of you don't even listen to public comment? The public comment of your constituents. Your consideration is appreciated.
You haven't even used this, your hair's all over it.
Next caller, please.
Jesus, cat.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Terrible. Fucking cat.
Caller with the last four digits, one-four-zero-three, please press star six to unmute.
Go ahead, caller.
Hello? Hello?
All right, let's move on to the next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
The deli on doing nothing over here, just sidebar-ing the whole time.
Good morning. Uh, is item fifteen, uh, on consent or just not up for public comment?
So item number fifteen is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general public comment, although it has been continued to October twentieth.
Okay.
Did you say fifteen or sixteen?
Fifteen.
Is that Monica?
Sorry, you cut out there. Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yes, it's, it's been continued, but you can speak to it during general public comment. So you have one minute.
Okay, great. Uh, good afternoon, council members. My name is Sarah Rubenstein. I'm a longtime CD five resident and also work at United Way on our Home Office Initiative team. Uh, I was here to support item fifteen, but I'll generally just say that I, uh, as a longtime resident, very much support the project and support council member Yaroslavski's efforts to bring the long-term, uh, the long overdue interim housing to our fifth district. We don't have any interim housing beds right now for individuals in the district. And this project will provide a really dignified space for folks to come inside and get connected to services. I'd love to appreciate the team for all their work. And when it comes to the-
And then he fucking, like he puts some gel in that shit or something, some pomade.
Uh, some of my unhoused neighbors inside. And, uh, work on our next site in CD five for some more information.
It's just the way he combs it off to the-
Thank you very much.
It's pretty awesome.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which item would you like to speak on?
Wait till he turns around again, you'll see it, Steve.
Hi, um, public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Perfect. Um, my name is Michelle Raff. I'm, uh, uh, part of, uh, council district two. But this is for Ms. Hernandez and, uh, the meeting that she had yesterday with LA Animal Services. I'm a longtime trapper, um, T and R. I am a-
Wanna see what I have to deal with?
Ex-volunteer of LA Animal Services for about ten years. And I want to advise you, um, please, uh, with the hiring of many-
That's what I gotta deal with.
New employees, you need to open up the Northeast Valley Shelter, which is, uh, with a private group, and they're paying no funds-
I wonder we have a problem with audio wires and shit.
From Proposition H. And, um-
Lucky I love you so much.
Be open, no matter how many employees, you are still limited to-
Think he likes the warmth of the wires.
With the population increasing over the years, that's why that shelter was built. Now, the thing is, please go after your community, to ask for T and R, to ask for traps, to ask for anything. Uh, going to LA Animal Services and providing that-
Caller, your time has expired.
Damn it.
Thank you very much.
We're coming up to two and a half hours.
Close public comment on all agenda items and general public comment. Uh, Mr. Clerk, what is the next item before us?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items sixteen through nineteen.
Those items are now before us, members. Do any members wish to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll.
He helps a lot.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next order of business?
The council may now vote on item twenty, which is the motion, McOscar Krikorian.
Very good, that item is now before us.
Thank you, OCB, I'll give it to him even though he's over here being bad right now.
Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Oh, stinkin'.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, there is a request to send this item forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Uh, that'll bring us next to item number one, uh, which, uh, on which there was a substitute motion, which was previously read into the record by the city attorney. Uh, so members will have to take two votes. The first vote is whether to substitute. So on that matter, if there's no member wishing to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Robyn? Very good. The substitute motion is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard on the substitute motion?
Yeah, for serious, Ron.
Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Very good. Mr. Clerk, what is now before us?
Was a good meeting.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, posted and referred next.
Shumpert is underrated.
Very good. Thank you. Um, members, any announcements? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues and, uh, to the public, um, last night I had the opportunity to visit, uh, the preview of the Catrina exhibit, which is being featured at, uh, El Pueblo at Placito Alvera. And it is a magnificent collection of handmade works of art, um, as I mentioned yesterday, featuring one of the Catrinas, uh, that is on loan from Vanessa Bryant, that, uh, Lily Martinez, uh, LA's own Catrina, created, uh, in memory and tribute to the late, uh, Kobe Bryant and Gigi Bryant. And so we want to continue to invite everybody to please come out to Placito Alvera. You know, I was having a conversation with Mr. De Leon. Um, Placito Alvera continues, and the merchants continue to struggle with, uh, trying to make ends meet. And this is a, an important part of our city's history, and this particular exhibit is a beautiful reason for people to come out, visit the exhibit, but also enjoy all that Placito Alvera has to offer. Uh, and so we want to encourage everybody to come out. It is available, uh, beginning today. The exhibit opens and it goes, uh, through Sunday, so it's a wonderful event. And we want to encourage everybody to please take time to go check it out. It is really magnificent and beautiful collection of, uh, of Catrinas. Um, the next announcement is, uh, today there is a very important gala commemorating fifty years of the Latino Caucus in the California Legislature.
Give you my caucus.
When five Latino members came together and really helped transform and ensure future representation of Latinos in the state of California. Among those instrumental in creating the caucus was, uh, my own dear friend and former LA City Council member, Richard Alatorre, when he served in the California State Legislature. And when you think about where it all began and how there was real, really limited representation, uh, and how they really worked collaboratively to ensure that our voices were heard, that we were seen.
National Pizza Day.
This celebration this evening, for fifty years, is an incredible opportunity for us to recognize, you know, the composition of the state and the work of all the elected leaders for everything that they've done in the history of California, and of course, here in the city of Los Angeles. And finally, want to invite you all that tomorrow, we are having an Oktoberfest celebration at LA Mission College. Uh, very excited because, you know, the San Fernando Brewery is collaborating with Mission College to provide this activation. Uh, our Mission College culinary program is making the brats and the pretzels, and it's just going to be fun, music for everybody from four to seven. There's still tickets available. Was proud to sponsor and support the activities of the culinary program.
I'm going over there to get drunk on pretzels.
To the northeast San Fernando Valley for a good time. Thank you.
We'll go over there high as fuck, just buy a bunch of pretzels.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, members? Councilmember Deleon?
If they have it, some of that.
Thank you much, uh, Mr. President.
Okay, whoever is shouting out is ordered to be silent. Okay, that person is not responding to my instructions, so, uh, they are ordered removed from the council chambers pursuant to rule twelve.
And for the record.
One moment, please stand down. You're ordered removed from the council chambers pursuant to rule twelve. Please leave silently. Please leave the chambers and leave silently.
Yes, a Wiener schnitzel.
And for the record, that was Camille Lewis.
Who will be subject to rule seven as well.
That's the BLM chick. Camille Lewis.
All right, council member.
Thank you much, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank, uh, councilwoman Monica Rodriguez for mentioning Estelas Catrinas in Placito Alvera. Uh, by all means, if you can come to Placito Alvera, that'd be wonderful. Merchants who have suffered greatly, uh, have not recovered because of the pandemic collectively.
That you forced to shut down. You guys shut them down. You did. You guys shut them down.
Struggle, you know, with, with the rents. But I want to thank you very much.
Yeah, you shut them down. And kept them shut down. And arrested them when they opened back up if they opened too early, right?
Concert hall.
It was them.
Also, uh, the.
Now they're gaslighting you the other way.
A wonderful, uh, human being, Frank Gary, uh, and his wife, Berta. It was a wonderful concert last night, the Walt Disney Concert, packed house. And it was a very enjoyable moment. I didn't get an opportunity, but I wanted to thank the councilwoman, uh, Unisa Hernandez, for a, a, a beautiful and powerful, uh, uh, celebration today. Uh, I'm grateful that she had mentioned from, uh, El Estado de Michoacan, la tierra caliente, este, la gente indígena, este, puré pechas. You know, we had a wonderful ceremony, the largest of its kind in the nation. We had about one thousand, uh, puré pechas come together, uh, in Lincoln Heights, uh, uh, just a few months ago, which was a wonderful celebration. But Mr. President, this week, I want to celebrate and recognize, uh, the tenth anniversary, ten year anniversary of the signing of the driver's license bill, uh, which, if you recall, right on the, uh, I would say, South Steps, uh, we all gathered together collectively, many folks around here, uh, along with then-Governor Jerry Brown. Well, we had, uh, a, a, a very empowering, uh, ceremony recognizing, or signing into law AB sixty, which today has given more than one million, one point five million individuals, uh, the legal right to drive, uh, in the United States of America, more specifically, the state of California. It was a significant step forward, uh, for many of our undocumented immigrants, something that that's real. Obviously, there's folks who, uh, uh, don't, uh, understand the significance of what it means for undocumented immigrants in the community. But, uh, again, ten year anniversary, I had the privilege and honor to, uh, negotiate that deal, uh, with then-Governor, uh, uh, Jerry Brown. And, uh, I just wanted to recognize that because it's important for the community.
Thank you very much. There will be silence in the council chambers.
There will be silence.
Any other announcements, members? All right, any motions for adjournment, members? Councilmember Padilla?
I said fuck the Dodgers. He was over it. He got Dodger shit on his thing.
If everyone could please rise for adjourning motions.
Hello, um, members of the council. Today I respects, respectfully ask that we adjourn in memory of Ofelia Avila Santana, a fifty-four-year-old resident of Sun Valley, an aunt to one of my council aides, Brianna Makiya. She passed away on October third this year at the age of sixty-nine after having battled colon cancer for a multitude of years. She was born on August ninth, nineteen fifty-four, in Durango, Mexico. And Ofelia spent her lifetime married to Benjamín Barajas for over thirty years and had three daughters, Laura, Leslie, and Jocelyn. She was one of eight children and survived, and is survived by her sisters, Guadalupe Santana, Gonzalo Santana, Clotilde Santana, and Pepe Santana. She enjoyed traveling and going to her native country of Mexico, and specifically loved being in Hawaii. She was a kind and loving soul who poured her love into her family, providing love and support in any way that she could. The family loses a mother, a wife, a sister, and a tía that many loved. Her presence and her family will be greatly missed. Hoy les pido a todos que me ayuden en terminar esta junta en memoria de Ofelia Avila Santana, a la edad de cincuenta y cuatro años, residente de Sun Valley y tía de una de mis colegas en mi oficina. Nos dejó este día tres de octubre de este año a la edad de sesenta y nueve años, uh, después de estar batallando con colon cancer por muchos años. Nació el día nueve de agosto, cincuenta y cuatro, en Durango, México, y estaba casada con el señor Benjamín Barajas por más de treinta años, dejando a su hija Laura, Leslie, y Jocelyn. Ofelia es una persona de ocho hermanos y hermanas y estar, y las están, las que deja, las que se quedan.
I don't know what's worse, or Spanish or English.
Son Guadalupe, Gonzalo, Clotilde, y Pepe. Le gustaba mucho a la señora Ofelia viajar a México y particular le encantaba estar en Hawaii. Muchos la querían y su familia, igual sus hijos, sus hijas, sus, uh, hermanas, y todos sus sobrinos y sobrina la van a extrañar. Y todos también de Sun Valley la extrañaremos. Gracias.
Thank you. May she rest in peace. Other, uh, motions to adjourn, members on my right?
God, Elian Gonzalez has to be like fucking thirty years old now, that kid.
Thank you much, uh, Mr. President.
Gotta be. I don't know, thirty. Damn close to twenty-five. It's gotta be.
To an extraordinary woman, Ramona Lopez, who passed away this August thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-three. Ramona was not only a church member of our community, but also the beloved grandmother of one of our very own staffers who works in my Eagle Rock office. That's no other than Martín Pérez. Along with Martín Pérez is his mother, who is the daughter of Ramona, uh, Soyla Pérez, and his tía, uh, um, Soyla's sister, este, también hija de la señora Ramona López, Clementina López. Today, colleagues, we adjourn in her memory, and we celebrate her remarkable life. Now, Ramona López was born on February nineteenth, nineteen forty-four, in the White House, more specifically, Casablanca, Jalisco, Mexico, to be specific. Her journey was one of unwavering love and resilience and unwavering dedication to her family and community. Ramona's story is a testament to the American dream. As she was brought to the United States by her husband back in the seventies, nineteen seventy-four, despite having only completed only three grades of primary school, the same as my mother, a third grade woman, a third grade education. Living in Mexico, she was determined to learn English and attended adult school here in Los Angeles. What truly defined Ramona was her immense love for her family. She was a mother to thirteen children, some of them were born in Mexico and six of them right here in the United States. Her love knew no bounds, and she made it her life's mission to ensure that every child that she met felt welcomed and loving. She provided invaluable support to working mothers, often babysitting without any pay, but offering wise counsel. Ramona's generosity extended beyond her family, oftentimes conducting wellness checks on her elderly neighbors. Ramona was not only a caregiver, but also an advocate for her community. She participated in various walks and movements for good causes, from supporting the Edward R. Roybal.
Is everybody in LA obese? No.
For immigration reform.
We have a lot of people like myself that are obese.
With migrant farm workers. She believed in making a positive difference, not just for her family, but for all the residents of Los Angeles. She deeply appreciated the opportunities that the United States offered her children. And she often said that there was no other country in the world like it. On August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, Ramona passed away peacefully, surrounded by her loving family. And while she no longer may be with us in person physically, her legacy of love, of kindness, and community service will continue to inspire us all. Ramona is survived by nine of her children and grandchildren, who will carry forward the lessons of compassion and generosity that she instilled in each and every one of them. May her legacy remind us all of the positive difference we can make in our community. A woman who had the courage to cross that border with only a third grade education, and the impact that she had on so many lives, not just her family, but her surrounding neighbors, as well as her community. She led a remarkable life and loved this country, the United States of America. She loved California, loved being the Angelino.
Stinks is right here. He's asleep on the wires. Wires are all hot.
May Ramona López rest in peace.
Just laying over here.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much, council member, and our, our sincere condolences to her entire family. May she rest in peace. Any other motions to adjourn, members? Very good. Seeing none? Thank you, members. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend.
Well, that's it, I guess. They're done for the weekend. Uh, let's see, I got, you know, Chase. Oh, breaking new footage of deadly mass shooting at Cook's Corner. Oh, what happened to that big deadly mass shooting that happened the other night? Everybody's going crazy over. How come I, I didn't hear a lick about that in the, in the news? Anybody? Anybody help me out there? Anybody? Anybody? Yeah, I'm getting rid of the music. I'm getting rid of it. Yeah, we'll finish this bag and then we're done, because fuck. Been up for almost three hours, two hours forty-five minutes. And I won't be on tonight, guys, because I have a bunch of shit to do, so, but I will be on tomorrow. We'll be on tomorrow night, do a Saturday night show, which is kind of fun. Should be popping right off the bat. We'll go check in on here and see what the, see what the, uh, place is jumping on a Saturday night. Have a little fun. I'm sorry, Kayla. Yeah, I got stuff to do, but, you know, Saturday, I'm sorry, Kayla, about the Rays next year. Really feel like we got to blame it on the whole Wander thing. Team was playing pretty darn good all year long, and then that thing came along and just derailed all the team's, you know, focus, if you ask me. That's it, Mecco. Let's go Dodgers. Got to play those D-backs. You know, I played Terry's team now. We'll see. I mean, they're a good young team, man. But, uh, you know, I don't underestimate anybody, so hopefully the Dodgers can play like they have all year long. And, uh, we'll see what the Dodgers get. Washing my hair? What, tonight? I wash my hair every night. Yeah, no show tonight. No, I got stuff to do. I got stuff, because I got a lot of work to do, like legitimate work. So I'll have it all done if I could just get it done tonight. So what's really the difference? So we have a show tomorrow. So that's all. Because I can't do that work tomorrow. I have to do it today. So I'm sure you'll understand. We'll have a good times, man. We'll have good times. At least they're getting a new stadium in St. Pete. Yeah, they are. I saw some of the drawings. It looks pretty cool with the Ray tank up there in the center field. I think that'll be a fresh start for them, you know, real nice, brand new stadium. They got a lot of young talent in the minors, too. Because again, they had been pretty bad here and there. And then, uh, they had this really good run, and then some of the big pitchers and stuff they had, they traded off for picks, and now all the picks are just like, you know, sitting there, uh, bubbling. They're sitting there simmering down in the minors. So, um, yeah, they'll start to bring them up, and we'll see. My work is with the rodeo. I'm a rodeo clown. I don't want to tell anybody, because again, you know, everybody's trying to cancel the rodeo, so I don't want to get canceled, and I'm a part of the rodeo. On Figaro tonight? No, I'm not going to go out until we get the light. I told you, we got all the pieces that we ordered. You know, I spent seven hundred bucks and got the gimbal. I got a light, a phone holder. I got the counterweight. But the only thing we didn't get is the light. And, you know, it's stupid, because it asked me, hey, do you want to get them individually, or do you want to get it all full in one shot? And it'll just come on Tuesday. I was like, okay, cool. Let's go for Tuesdays. You don't have to come and drop off and do a million drops, right? Because it gives you that option. So I get that option. Of course, it brings everything but that. And then it still brought it in, too. Ah, fucking Amazon, dude. So I'm waiting on the light. I don't know. And it's not the, you know, it's eleven bucks, not the most expensive thing, but, but you can't really balance what we need to balance, because again, the light will be on there, so I want to have it, because we always go out at night, and there's times, you know, you know, where you may need to see something. Like Jeremy showed you the poop the other night? You know, I wouldn't have been able to show you that, because again, my, you know, I didn't have, like, the flash on my phone. You know? And even, I remember, I actually showed you guys that one car, like, the side of it, and then I went back and looked at it, and you can't see what I'm trying to show you, because it wasn't lit enough on the street, you know? So, yeah, just make it look nice. You liked it out there, Spilborn? Yeah, I enjoyed going out with Jeremy. It's fun. I enjoyed going out with Scott, too. It was fun as well. I mean, fuck, Scott and I were on the news the first night we went out. Literally caught a chase. We were side by side, and Scott's like, I'm gonna roll the window down when I pull up with him. Say something to him. What do you want me to say? Pull over? So we were yelling at him, but he, he didn't care. He stopped side by side. He looked at us and took off, because, you know, Scott had one of the at us and took off, because, you know, Scott had one of those cars that straight looks like an undercover cop car, like I would have, you know? It does, or did, before he sold it, you know? So, um, yeah, I, I wouldn't have trusted it. I would have thought, okay, well, this is like an undercover trying to stop me during the chase kind of thing. But I think he realized it after, like, because we were filming him and not, you know, he knows cops aren't doing that, so. And then I went back and watched the news, and the news was like, who's this, who's this car over here on the side? Is that a cop? Oh my god, I think it's some stringers. You know what I mean? Because they could see the whole interaction. So it was funny. Pretty cool. He just wanted to smoke. He may have. I don't know, he was texting me. I'm Point Dexter. Point Dexter is dope. He just walked into all kinds of shit. Played the piano, I mean, the violin terribly. I think he was like an astrophysicist or something. That's what he was good at. No, no, he was the one that found the loophole. He found the loophole in the, um, in the, in the rules. He was probably a lawyer, pre-law. All right, guys, I'm out of here before I die. Jesus Christ, I'm about to die. But thank you for, uh, joining me today. It was fun. Or joining us, the family, and of course, old, old stinkums over here, who's, uh, in another world, asleep on the hot wires, what you get. Whoop, that's not what I want. Nope, nope, that's what I want. There we go. So that's it. You know, I just wanted to, um, you know, say thanks for everything, and, uh, if there's a chase, I'll, you know, and I'm here, I will do it. Let's see, you know how it works. Um, but other than that, have a great Friday. Be safe, have fun. I will see you on Saturday night for some special smoke and scan Saturday night fun. You know, we'll do some shit like that, you know, take some dabs and all that good jazz, so I appreciate you. Thank you all for the likes, the love, the thumbs ups are huge, and, um, thank you so much for the donos, too. And, uh, you guys are awesome. Like I said, have a fantastic Friday, and, uh, I will see you guys mañana. Eight PM Pacific Standard Time for tomorrow, just to your time, sales. Bye.
Hasta la vista, baby.
See you, guys. Amigo.
Bye, y'all.